Good evening and welcome to the special presentations of the City of Moreno Valley on April 17th through 2018. Our first presentation tonight will be the presentation of the 2017 Volunteer of the Year Award to Milton Adams, which will be presented by our Mayor, Exion Gutierrez.
If I could have, alright. So, tonight, we would like to take some time to recognize our greatest assets in the City of Moreno Valley, our people. Specifically, we would like to recognize the 2017 Volunteer of the Year, Milton Adams. Milton Adams has been a member of the city's Emergency Response Force, ERF, since 2013. However, he has been giving his time to the city since 2007 volunteering for PD. Milt, as he is known by, is always enthusiastic, organized, and is a natural leader. He is dedicated and makes himself available at a moment's notice to assist in response and other activities. Milt has responded to numerous police and fire incidents, including traffic accidents and evacuation shelters. He also takes lead when responding with ERF, providing first aid and hydration for the participants that attend the Hikes to the Top, sponsored by the Parks and Recreation Department, and for the 4th of July as well, Parade and Fun Fest. I've seen you there as well, yeah. He also provides logistical and field support for our Fire Department and Office of Emergency Management Training Exercises and Drills, including the city's full-scale exercise, the Fire Department's live burn exercise, and our Community Emergency Response Team Training, too. Additionally, on top of all of that, he helps teach fire extinguisher and fire safety to local area high school students. He also helps maintain our response vehicles, our support trailers, and our Emergency Operations Center, also known as EOC. His willingness to assist our first responders and the City of Moreno Valley whenever and wherever is the character and the true spirit of giving back to the community. In honor of Milton Adams' unwavering spirit of giving, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley presents this commendation to Milton. Let's give him a round of applause. Milt was faced equally admirable competition in pursuit of this year's honor. So if I could have, if she's here tonight, Jean Dolan? Okay, let's give her a round of applause. Jean Dolan has been a volunteer for the Moreno Valley Animal Shelter since December of 2015. Jean faithfully volunteers at the animal shelter every Tuesday morning and assists the staff with some of the animal and shelter duties such as checking all of the animals to make sure that they have the food and water they need, checking the bedding and changing it if necessary, and she even takes care of the never-ending laundry as well. She does everything with an exceptional attitude and smile. We also would like to recognize one other person, actually two other people. If I can have Melanie? Is Melanie here? No, she's not. What about Kim? No? Okay. Alright, so congratulations to the fellow nominees and to Milton as the Volunteer of the Year. Your service and continued dedication are greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. The next presentation will be the proclamation recognizing April as Donate Life California Month. Councilmember Cabrera will speak and present the proclamation to Portia Burleson.
According to One Legacy, there are currently 21,000 citizens of the state of California who are awaiting an organ transplant. The organs and tissues from a single donor can enhance or save the lives of 75 people. A single blood donation may help three people. Donations may be accepted across all ages and various medical conditions. In recognition of the great need and the impact that a single donation may have, the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley would like to proclaim April as Donate Life California Month. And we have the proclamation right over here. To accept this proclamation tonight, we have Portia Burleson. There you go. And Portia Burleson is with One Legacy Ambassador, and the proclamation reads, "Whereas organ, tissue, marrow, and blood donation are life-giving acts recognized worldwide as compassion to those in need, and whereas donors of organs, tissues, marrow, and blood save and heal millions of lives each year. And California residents can sign up with a Donate Life California donor registry when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID cards at the California DMV. Now therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, on behalf of its citizens and staff, hereby proclaims April 2018 as Donate Life California Month, and in doing so, we encourage all Californians to check yes when applying for or renewing their driver's license or ID card." And here to accept the proclamation is Ms. Portia Burleson of One Legacy Ambassador. Would you like to say a few words, Portia? Share a little bit?
Sure.
Okay. I'll hold that for you if you want.
Good evening. It's an honor to be here as the One Legacy Ambassador and as a Moreno Valley resident. I would like to thank Mayor Gutierrez, Mayor Protim Baca, Councilmembers Giba, Marquez, and Cabrera for allowing me to share my story and for recognizing April as DMV Donate Life Month. My name again is Portia Burleson, and in 2015, I was just living a normal life. I was a wife, a mom, and a career woman. When I was called to the hospital for an emergency, I was aware that I was sick and under the weather, but I was told the most devastating news of my life. I was dying from liver failure. So within two days, I was rushed to UCLA, and you wouldn't believe it, but had to go through all these tests from psychological. My family had to be interviewed to see if I would even be acceptable for, susceptible for a liver transplant. Well, a month later, on October 3rd, at midnight, I was rolled into the operating room for a nine-hour surgery. Once my surgery was completed, my doctor had told my husband that if I had not had that surgery that weekend, I would be dead by Monday. So because someone decided to be a donor and is now my legacy, I no longer live my life without passion or purpose. So here in the City of Moreno Valley, I'm actually a Commissioner for the Arts Council. I do own an art studio named Fearless. I got to see my son graduate high school from Vista del Lago. He's now a sophomore at UC Riverside, and my husband just graduated with his bachelor. So, life continues to be good. I want to encourage everyone to, when you go to take your driver's license, to think about and consider organ and tissue donation. He kind of read some of the facts, but there are over 114,000 people currently waiting for organ transplantation in the United States. There's one person listed every 22 seconds, and there's about eight people that die every other minute or so. Organ and tissue donation does not necessarily have to be a deceased donor, it could be a living donor. Your kidney, you have two kidneys, and your liver regrows itself every six months, so you could do a partial liver donation. That's pretty much all I want to say. I want to thank you guys for letting me be here today. Thank you so much.
Let's give Portia Burleson another applause. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have our final presentation for Recycle All-Stars Awards. If we can have the representative from Waste Management come up?
So the audience knows, right now, we're doing special presentations, so we're about to finish this last one, and then we'll get started with the meeting, the actual City Council regular meeting.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is Barbara Jimenez from Waste Management, and she has an award. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, City Council, city staff, and Moreno Valley. My name is Barbara Jimenez, and I am your Waste Management Recycling Coordinator. Tonight, we honor Moreno Valley's 2018 Recycling All-Stars. Our business awardees are Baker's Burgers Store #156, represented by Mr. Emery Maderos, and Miguel Jr., represented by Larissa Carpenter and Francisco Gonzalez. We have two residential customers, the Diaz and Romero families. They are all honored for their exemplary recycling efforts as part of Waste Management's Recycling All-Stars program. We are thrilled to recognize the exemplary actions of these customers, who are doing
your outstanding recycling effort.
their part to recycle often and recycle right.
So thank you so much. Would you like to say something?
Each individual action helps conserve natural resources as we work together to help the
Would you? No? Well, on behalf of Miguel's Jr., just remember to go and have their delicious burritos, because
City of Moreno Valley meet state recycling goals. As part of the program, Waste Management's drivers submit nominations from their respective routes based on several criteria, including how often the recycling car or bin is out for collection, and the cleanliness of the container, meaning that no contaminants such
they're very delicious, especially the papa ones. Yes, and they recycle, so they're contributing to our beautiful City of Moreno Valley.
as household garbage or garden clippings are mixed in the recyclables. May I call the 2018 Recycling All-Stars forward to receive their award and gift from Waste
So thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes our special presentation section of the council Management? Miguel's Jr.?
On this. Yes, we're gonna take a picture.
meeting, and we'll reconvene in about five minutes for the actual council meeting.
Let's move that one a little bit that way. They're the only ones that are here.
Thank you.
Good evening, and welcome to the joint meeting of the City Council of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Community Services District, City Accessor Agency for the Community Redevelopment Agency of the City of Moreno Valley, Moreno Valley Housing Authority, and the Board of Library Trustees. The City Council receives a separate stipend for CSD meetings. I now call this meeting to order on April 17th, 2018, at about 6:10 PM. The pledge of allegiance will be led by Frank Wright. Please remain standing for the invocation, which will be given by Pastor Jeff White from Sandals Church right here in Moreno Valley.
Everyone please stand, face the flag, and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will you pray with me? God, I just want to thank you tonight for Moreno Valley. God, thank you for these leaders that are leading the charge. God, I thank you for the land of Moreno Valley. I thank you for the resources that you've given us. God, I thank you for those veterans and those that have gone before us. God, I thank you for the employment opportunities in the community. God, I thank you for the families, and I thank you for the recreation and all the organizations that make up this community, God. I'm grateful for those that are day in and day out, putting their hearts into Moreno Valley. God, thank you for the churches of Moreno Valley and others that come together on a regular basis. So God, tonight, I want to pray for these leaders as they lead well. They lead with integrity, God, they lead with unity, and that they would lead together and take this community forward in the future, God. In your name, amen.
Thank you. Pastor White from Sandals Church. And Frank also. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Yes, sir. Councilmember Giba.
I'm here.
Councilmember Marquez.
Here.
Councilmember Cabrera.
Here.
Mayor Protim Baca.
Here.
Mayor Gutierrez.
Here. Staff introductions, please.
Pat Hockesnade, City Clerk.
Marshall Arman, Chief Financial Officer, City Treasurer.
Martin Kozanow, City Attorney.
Tom DeSantis, City Manager.
Alan Brock, Assistant City Manager.
Mike Lee, Economic Development Director.
Rick Sanzmar, Acting Community Development Director.
David Kurlowitz, Chief of Police.
Mark Williams, Battalion Chief Fire Department.
Patty Solano, Acting Director, Parks and Community Services.
Michael Wolf, Director of Public Works, City Engineer.
Alright, thank you. So first, I want to say thank you to everyone that's here tonight. We have a lot of people here tonight. So thank you to the carpenters as well, for being here as well. Also, I just want to let everybody know that we currently are offering Spanish translation services. If anyone is interested, it's all the way in the back, towards the left. The devices there can be checked out in the back of the room. Before we actually hear any public comments on any of the items, I just wanted to remind everyone and give them a friendly reminder of this is just your first time, that we will allow you to speak on particular items, on each item, and so when you come up to the podium, I do ask that the audience be respectful towards you and that there be civility, obviously, in the meeting. So before we hear, normally, we do items on non-agenda items, but we're gonna go ahead and move, we're gonna start with G1, which is the Prologis, and that's the Moreno Valley Logistics Center. And before we hear those public comments, we will take action on G1, and then E2, and then E1. We have, if you don't recall, the public hearing was closed several months ago, and also the public comment period was closed, and it was just deliberation. But given the amount, you know, of individuals that are here, and also some written material, you know, which has already been also provided in the agenda packet, I am going to allow for public comment. So, continued from the January 16, 2018 City Council meeting, following the public comments, we'll move straight to council deliberation. Okay, so, Madam Clerk? Go ahead and tell us how many speakers we have for this particular item.
For item G1, we have three speakers so far. Jimmy Elrod, Omar Cobian, and Mike Day.
And Mike Lee?
Mike Day.
Oh, okay. Okay. I was like, wait a minute, you work here. Okay. Alright, go ahead. Unless he has a house around here. And then Pat, before the speaker comes, can you make sure, or maybe talk with Technology Services to see that that way the item pops up here, too, and the packet, because it's not popping up?
Okay.
Who's the, do we have Jimmy? Oh, okay, Jimmy? And then, we'll start the timer in just a second, okay, Jimmy?
Mayor, do you want the speaker, the applicant to fill out a speaker form, or when do you want him to speak?
Yeah, he can fill out the speaker form. Well, I mean, just, we'll have him speak. Just have him come up after the three speakers.
And it's two minutes?
And we'll take it as a public comment.
Two minutes?
Yes, two minutes, yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Councilmembers. My name is Jimmy Elrod. I have the honor and privilege to represent the 800 union carpenters and families who reside here in Moreno Valley, some of which are here tonight. Just here to take a moment to voice our commitment to Prologis for the utilization of local hire, and the utilization of apprenticeship training, and paying good decent livable wages to the workforce here in Moreno Valley. Also, would like to commend the mayor, the councilmembers, for all the good, hard work that you guys do, and the leadership that you provide for this fine city. And I just would like to conclude it by saying that a yes vote for this project is directly in benefit the workforce here in Moreno Valley, the members here with me tonight, and their families, and it's gonna stimulate the local economy by producing good jobs. And I appreciate your time. I hope you consider to vote yes on the project. Thank you.
Thanks, Jimmy.
My name is Omar Cobian. I have lived in Moreno Valley for about 30 years now. I went to Valley View High School here, and I now have kids that live here and go to Both my kids are in youth sports, and it just comes a time where I spend, you know, I've been a carpenter for 20 years, and I could count the times that I've worked in Moreno Valley with one finger. That's sad to say, when I spend 15 to 20 hours a week in traffic when I drive to LA, and if I pass downtown, where you could add another 10 a week, at least. You know, I would love to be able to coach my son's team, but instead, I miss my daughter's volleyball games, I miss my son's baseball games, and it comes a time where I would like the opportunity to maybe work in my city, and I share, and I speak not only for myself, but for all the members standing here. We want more work in our town. Work like this will only benefit Moreno Valley and bring more revenue to the City of Moreno Valley. I, as a lifelong, you know, resident and future resident for my children, I encourage you guys to vote yes, because a no vote is a no on the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Omar. Thanks for sharing your story. We have Mike.
Followed by Roy Blackard and Rocky Stor.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. My name is Mike Day. I'm the Business Manager of Labor's Local 1184 here at Riverside Imperial County. I'm standing on behalf and support of this project, on behalf of over our 308 members that live here in Moreno Valley. We're currently working on projects here in Moreno Valley. The one, over 1.5 million square foot building being built currently off the 10 corridor, or I'm sorry, the 60 corridor, and then on the 800, over 800 square foot project design build for the company coming in that's gonna be hiring local residents there. We're proud to be a part of not only this project, but many projects. Our members will have the first right to hire here local under the PLA we have with, under the contract with the contractor that's gonna build this project, so our residents, your members, our residents, will have first pick to be dispatched out to these projects here, based on the ZIP code, and we're proud of that. It provides them with local jobs, where they're not on these freeways, driving day in and day out, where they get home to their families and kids, and support them and help them along with some of the things they're doing here in the community. We're very proud to be members of the Moreno Valley Youth Federation. In fact, it's funny, I got a plaque today from the teams that we support here in the area. It's one of the best things about this job, is that we've been fortunate enough to be able to help contribute and provide economic benefits to the community. These jobs, I can tell you, provide tremendous amount of benefits to the membership that works on them. I mean, they have health and welfare, pensions, vacation savings, retirements, apprenticeship programs. So I've always said that a part-time construction job's a full-time job, and it's because you go from one project to the next, in order, at the end of that, hopefully, you'll end up having a pension in retirement. So I thank you again, I urge you to vote yes and support the project. Thank you.
Next three speakers is Roy Blackard, Rocky Stor.
The bright orange brings a lot of bright light to the room, like this project should, and I think back to the summer of 2014 when Prologis, this project, up to the north of the, or north side of the city. I was the only speaker out of 13 to come up and supported that at that time when it first came up. But I would say, and encourage you to look very favorably on this project, because like all the other industrial projects that have been built in the last seven or eight years, they have brought a positive impact on the community of Moreno Valley. It has brought jobs to this area, it has brought increased treasury, because as most of you should know, because I say it a lot, they bring twice as much revenue into the city treasury to pay the salaries of these guys over here, and to provide you with the stuff you need to do your jobs. And it provides, all across the board, we should be encouraging these projects, and we should be looking to redo the regulations that are causing us to have a meeting like this. We should have regulations that are very friendly to bringing these types of jobs, opportunities, and projects into our city, because as we've seen in Moreno Valley, we've seen nationally, since Trump brought in a lot of the deregulation, it's torched off an economic boom that we have not seen in a long time, and that benefits everyone. And we all should, if we're concerned about economic prosperity, quality of life, in all of our communities and in Moreno Valley, we should look to support projects like this, we should look to adjust the regulations so it encourages this, so we have a more streamlined process, so we don't even have to have meetings like this.
The bright orange brings a lot of bright light to the room, like this project should, and I think back to the summer of 2014 when Prologis, this project up to the north of the, or north side of the city, I was the only speaker out of 13 to come up and supported that at that time when it first came up. But I would say, and encourage you to look very favorably on this project, because like all the other industrial projects that have been built in the last seven or eight years, they have brought a positive impact on the community of Moreno Valley. It has brought jobs to this area, it has brought increased treasury, because as most of you should know, because I say it a lot, they bring twice as much revenue into the city treasury to pay the salaries of these guys over here, and to provide you with the stuff you need to do your jobs. And it provides, all across the board, we should be encouraging these projects, and we should be looking to redo the regulations that are causing us to have a meeting like this. We should have regulations that are very friendly to bringing these types of jobs, opportunities, and projects into our city, because as we've seen in Moreno Valley, we've seen nationally, since Trump brought in the, a lot of the deregulation, it's torched off an economic boom that we have not seen in a long time, and that benefits everyone. And we all should, if we're concerned about economic prosperity, quality of life, in all of our communities and in Moreno Valley, we should look to support projects like this, we should look to adjust the regulations so it encourages this, so we have a more streamlined process, so we don't even have to have meetings like this. Thank you.
Thank you Roy. Next speaker is Rocky Storey, followed by Rafael Brugueras.
My name is Rocky Stone, I am Rocky Stone, sorry about that. I'm a resident of about what, eight houses away from where the construction site will actually be taking place, if it's approved. I've got to meet with the team and ask a lot of questions, and I don't see any reason why I would be opposed with it. It looks like it's bringing a lot of jobs to the area, not just in the long term with whoever's running the facility, but with obviously the construction. And I think that's a positive thing for Moreno Valley. I've been living in Moreno Valley since the 80s and seeing it come through, everything it's gone through, and so I'm, I'm not opposed to this. I think this is a good thing for the city, and I hope you guys vote yes.
Thank you Rocky. We have Rafael Brugueras, and then followed by Luis Palomares.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, residents, and our guests. I've been to the planning commission on this project, and Prologis does a lot of great things, they built a lot of great big warehouses that we use daily. There's a lot of great jobs in warehouses. I know, I worked for Ralph Ufoles for 25 years, I got paid well. The business manager said it correctly today, what they'll be getting if this project is approved, they have the right, they should put up, put up those yellow signs, and let them know what you really want here. That's why they're here, okay? They want what I have. I retired, for seven years, I've been retired. There, there's a lot of young people here that want what I have, had once. This is why they fight. This is a beautiful thing, between last Thursday and today, there's been a lot of compromise in the Moreno Valley, because it's changed its attitude. It's become a brand-new place to work in and do business. This is why they're here, fighting. Prologis is not a bad company, it's a great company. They made a compromise to help them get their pension, so one day, one day they'd be able to help their sons and daughters to raise their grandkids. That's what it's all about, because that's what I'm doing. You fight, you don't give up, you fight, it may not be a su entire job like mine's in the warehouse. I worked in it, they build it, now we need them to finish their jobs so other people can work on it, and get what I had, so we can live better lives. This is what America's all about.
Thank you.
Wow Rafael, you're right, I agree with 120%. You know, all these people here today, all these workers, they need jobs, they wanna be close to home, they wanna be close to their kids, they wanna be there when their kids, you know, play game, ballgames and all that, they wanna be there. I have a son-in-law that travels, he's a union, not this local, but another one, and I know how it feels, and he's got a blind son, he don't spend a lot of time with him. Come on, it's time. It, it's a good project, they've been coming, they, they've done everything, Prologis has, you know, did everything you want them to do, I believe so, so I think it's a good project, we've gotta get it going. Let's get out of Egypt now, let's just do something here for Moreno Valley. You know, it's, we're well overdue, well overdue. We got an excellent staff here that's, you know, crossing all the Ts and dotting all the Is, I mean, we couldn't ask for better. I mean, we're the most salvage city in the, what, the nation, the third, Moreno Valley? Come on, how come we can't make this happen? We gotta make it happen, it has to happen today, and I hope you're all on board, and I hope all the council members agree with this project, because we've been needing it too long, you know, we're five years behind, so let's get it going, let's bring these jobs, let's get these guys to be able to stay home, be close to their homes, let's do that, thank you.
Thank you Luis. Any more? No? Okay.
No more speakers.
Did you guys wanna speak for the public comment part? And again, this isn't like a, you know, like, yeah, it's just a public comment.
No, Tyson Chave and Scott Mulcahy here on behalf of Prologis, we'll be brief. You know, we were, first of all, thank you so much to the councilman, mayor, Mayor Protem, really for the time granted, Prologis from our last presentation, you know, there were clearly some concerns raised not only by the public, but by the council directly, and we really utilized that the, the last six months to, we feel like, address the concerns as they were raised, to, you know, really get such a strong support. Thank you, obviously, all the members for coming out and supporting. I was told these are all residents of Moreno Valley that would potentially be employed on a project like this. So I think we just wanted to, one, say thanks for the time, and then really just open it up if you guys had any specific questions for us, or if not, you know, we're, we're hopeful that this project gets approved, and, and we think it'll be a great project for the city.
Thank you, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move into deliberation. So with the deliberation, we will do one round, and we'll go ahead and start with the deliberation, and then after that, I'll go ahead and close that, and then we'll entertain motions. Okay, so council member Marquez?
Thank you Mayor. I wanna say, thank you everybody for coming out, I know this is a very important project, they're all important, but it shows that the support that this project has behind them. In the last couple of weeks, and I have met again with Tyson and Scott in my office, and we had, we did have concerns, but, but my main thing was the concerns of the residents in the area. At beginning of this project, there was residents that were concerned about the buffer, about this, about traffic, but they were able to come out and, and talk to the residents along with the council, and they presented themselves in a professional manner, and they also, the residents that were against the project, they were able to convince them this was a good project. The union, I, believe me, I'm a retired Teamster, 23 years, and I know how, how the unions work. You guys are one whole family, and, and you guys stuck together through this, and I'm really proud of you guys. And being residents of Moreno Valley, that's, even shows more of a support. I understand you wanna be home with your family, and I myself want you to be home with your family, because I raised my four children here in Moreno Valley. I was able to work locally, I also worked for Pepsi my last eight years, so it was all local, 10 minutes to work in the morning, 10 minutes to work coming home. So I, I know how that feeling is, and I wish that on everybody. Come home, spend time with the family, coach football, coach baseball, go to dinner, spend that money in Moreno Valley, that's what counts. So, I, I just wanna say, you know, to Tyson and Scott, thanks for coming out and choosing Moreno Valley, and, and I'll support this project, so thank you very much.
Also, any other? Mayor Protembaka?
Well, first of all, I wanna say thank you to everyone that's out here to support the project, because I know that the company did a lot of community outreach, and I don't see any speakers here that were in opposition to the project. However, I did get some letters from the usual, like the Sierra Club, and other people that are against the project for their same reasons as they are against all projects, and similar to the World Logistics Center that's going to be built, which is already an approved project, we're getting people like you off the freeway, so it's gonna help the congestion, and it's gonna help keep you close to home, as some of the speakers said, and I think that's very important, because of all the things that are happening with our children, we need to stay close, we need two parents at home, and I know that that's a, a community benefit in itself, but most importantly is that we're get, getting our labor force to work. So I wanna say thank you for being here tonight.
I also wanna thank Prologis as well, for persevering and, and really thinking outside the box. You know, I know when you came, I think it was about eight months ago or six months ago, it's been a while, there was no agreement with labor, but you know, labor's really important to me, you know, you know, I'm a union member as well, you know, as an educator during the daytime, and so it was very, very important to me that there'd be some, some agreement, and I'm happy that, that there has been an agreement with the carpenters. Number one, I think it's gonna be a great project, I think it, you know, obviously it's going to shorten the commute for the people that are gonna be working here, they're gonna be doing like a PLA, you know, for more local hires, reducing the traffic, benefits again to the families, you know, just like the speakers said, I think Rafael said it best, and also some of the other speakers as well. So I'm in support of the project. Council member Cabrera?
Thank you Mayor. First of all, I would like to also say thank you to all of you, everyone in the public who came out today to speak your mind about this project, and I also wanna thank Prologis for being, you know, very proactive and engaging with the community, and being willing to meet with the council as well, to go over any concerns that both the residents and we had on our side, so we, I wanna thank you for that. I know that, I believe one of your employees, or the wife of one of your employees is a teacher here in, at one of our schools here in Moreno Valley, and I believe you mentioned to me you'll be volunteering at one of those schools, so, you know, I hope moving forward, that will be expanded and more of that involvement in our community and bettering for the community benefit. I hope you will do that on a larger scale moving forward. Also, you know, I can, I can relate to many of you out, my father is a general contractor, he's a carpenter by nature, he's done that his whole life, and I work with him. And so, when these jobs come up, you know, we've had to drive to North Los Angeles, down far south to San Diego to work on small projects, you know, where there's work, we're gonna go. And, so I, I understand what it is to, to live here and drive hours outside of the city, you know, driving in traffic in the morning to go to Los Angeles for maybe two, sometimes three hours, and then on the way back, you get home real late, nine, 10, sometimes, you know, midnight or later, depends what you're doing, but I can understand how difficult it is in this trade, because I also do the same thing. So, I just wanna say thank you to all of you, thank you again to Prologis, and, and I, I do like this project.
Alright, I'll go ahead and, we're gonna take three separate motions, okay, three separate votes for this, so I'll entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendation number one.
So moved.
Which is, okay, the final EIR, okay, so we'll go ahead and do that.
Mayor Protembaka and council member Cabrera? Motion and, motion and second?
Yes.
Okay, you can vote.
So that was the EIR, the Environmental Impact Report. And then, we're gonna go ahead and take a separate motion to introduce the ordinance to approve the specific plan amendment for the Moreno Valley Industrial Area Specific Plan 208. Entertain a motion?
Moved.
Motion by Cabrera, second by Marquez. Okay, please vote. Alright, okay, and then now for the, the big one, right, the real one, we'll go ahead and entertain a motion to approve staff's recommendations number three and four, which is the plot plans, and also the tentative parcel map. Okay, motion by Marquez, second by Cabrera, please vote. Wanna say congratulations to Prologis, congratulations to all of you as well, thank you. We're gonna go ahead and move on to E2, to our next item, which is not related to Prologis. This one is the Majestic and Festival Project. And we'll, we'll actually just take a, a minute here, we'll take a minute. Okay, so I wanted to say, first of all, thank you to everyone, I'm kinda taking this out of order here, so we'll do public hearings, questions or comments from the public, on a public hearing matter are limited to five minutes per person, depending on how many speakers, we might limit that, per individual. Those wishing to speak should complete and submit a golden rod speaker slip to the Sergeant at Arms. We'll go ahead and start with E2 Majestic Festival Project, Report of Community Development. Rick?
Yes, your honore, excuse me, Honorable Mayor, I'd like to introduce Julia Dakota, Associate Planner, who will be giving you the presentation on the Majestic Moreno Valley component, but as you noticed in the staff report, there are two projects. Chris Ormsby, our senior planner, will be coming up subsequently after you entertain the public hearing on this particular project one, and he'll be talking about the festival. So first is Julia Dakota.
For Majestic.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Dr. Gutierrez, and members of the City Council. I'm Julia Dakota, Associate Planner, and this report recommends that the City Council convene a public hearing and consider that staff recommendations to approve Project One, Majestic Moreno.
Oh, can you speak a little more into?
Do you want me to start over?
Just.
Okay, perfect.
Continue.
This report recommends that the City Council convene a public hearing and consider staff recommendations to approve Project One, the Majestic Moreno Valley, a mixed-use medical use center campus, which includes a general plan amendment and a change of zone, and Project Two, which is the festival-specific Plan 205 amendment, which includes a general plan amendment and a change of zone. As provided for in the state government code, a mandatory element of the general plan may be amended no more than four times during one calendar year. However, each amendment may include more than one change to the general plan element. The recommended actions approve one general plan amendment to the land use element for both Project One and Project Two. The first amendment, this is the first amendment to the land use element for this calendar year. Project One is the Majestic Moreno Valley Medical Village, and it includes five buildings of a mixed-use medical center campus on the presently vacant 18.5 acre site located on the east side of Nathan Street, just south of Brodeia. In addition to the general plan amendment, a change of zone from residential to A to office with the medical use overlay is also recommended with this application. The master plot plan establishes the layout for the entire proposed medical campus comprised of two medical office buildings on the west portion of the site, and three buildings on the east portion, easterly portion of the site, for the assisted living and the skilled nursing facilities. Given the proximity to residential, conditional use permits were required for the assisted living and skilled nursing facility. Given the proximity to residential, conditional use permits were required for the assisted living and skilled nursing facilities. The project includes a pleasing landscape along Nathan Street, with the medical office buildings facing Nathan, drought-tolerant plants, synthetic turf, and walking paths throughout the site. Pervious paving is installed to assist with water quality while providing a decorative design to the parking lot areas. And these are the assisted living buildings that will be on the easterly portion of the site. A mitigated negative declaration was prepared by MSA Consulting and reviewed by Planning. All reviews indicate that the project and the environmental review was completed in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act, SEQA. With the adoption and implementation of the mitigation monitoring and reporting program and the 20 mitigation measures provided for the application, there will not be a significant effect on the environment. The project was noticed per the requirements of the city and SEQA. To date, I have not received any comments or questions for the City Council meeting. There were one or two for the Planning Commission hearing. One was just a resident who wanted to know when they were going to start. And one was a discussion on the actual land uses, or the land itself. This concludes my presentation, and this time the applicant and I are here to answer any questions if you have any, thank you.
Thank you so much, Julia?
Yes.
Alright, so we'll go ahead and start with council questions of staff. And again, these will only be pertaining to questions, questions of staff, or to the applicant as well. Okay, so we'll go ahead and start with, we have one question from Councilmember Marquez.
Thank you, Mayor. Julie, this project, it's quite a bit of acreage out there. It's not gonna be fenced in, I mean, it's gonna be an open, like an open campus.
There will be a block wall on the easterly property line and the southerly property line, because there is existing residential already there. And whenever you do a commercial-type project or a medical use, you have to put, per code, you have to put a block wall around it.
Okay, on the north side of the property, there's no.
On the north side of the project, there is no wall. There's, Brodea Avenue will be improved with the project. And if you can, it doesn't, there's no block wall on that, on that side.
Isn't there a resident on that street further back of the compound of the?
To the east of the site, there are a few residents, yes. And then to the northeast, further up, there are, yes.
But it doesn't require like a wall, like you said, it would be a wall on the east end and the south end?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay. You haven't had any reports or any complaints from the residents? Have they reached out to the residents, or is it something that was advertised to the residents?
It was advertised to the residents, to all property owners within 300 feet for the Planning Commission hearing, and also for this hearing. At the Planning Commission hearing, I had one resident call me regarding the project. She did not have any concerns with the project, she welcomed the project. She just wanted to make sure there would be a block wall, because she wanted the block wall.
And what's the timeline to build this project, do you know?
I do not have that information, but the applicant may be able to provide that for you.
Is the applicant, you said he was here, or they were here?
Is the applicant here? Okay, could he come up?
Come up, please. Well, yeah, I have a question, a couple of questions for them.
Good evening, Nicole Van, MSA Consulting, I am the representative for Richard Tork, who is the applicant for the project.
The question I have is, what's the timeframe to belt this, to belt out the whole?
Oh, it is, it is a three-phase project, and we are looking to start, Richard's looking to start development in 2020. And that would probably take about two years, and then, two years after 2020, we would develop Phase Two, and then Phase Three would come online.
Okay, and you'll be working, excuse me, you'll be working closely with the hospital there? Is that your plans to kinda work together with the county?
That's correct, it's supposed to complement the existing hospitals.
And what about the other company, the other home, the home care center there?
Yes, all of it is supposed to, the whole project is intended to be very complimentary to.
Work together?
Exactly. And to answer your question about the outreach, we did do a separate outreach by mail as well. Not a part of Planning Commission or City Council letters, but we did a mailer that detailed the project description, and we included some exhibits, and we mailed those on our own to everyone within the 300-foot radius. And we only received one phone call ourselves, and that was just to ask when the project was going to start. We didn't receive any complaints.
And my last question.
Sure.
You seen what was here earlier, the unions. Is this project gonna include unions, like we had earlier, union workers? Can you tell me that?
I think we will hire the local people for the construction, and for the union, we haven't got idea yet.
Do you believe you might?
Yes.
You might be able to work a deal with them?
Yes.
Okay, okay, that's alright, thank you.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and then open the hearing. Any public testimony? Madam Clerk?
Yes. We have.
For the Majestic.
Well, they only said E2.
Okay, who, what's the person's name?
There are seven people.
Okay, but what's the person's name?
Nicole Van is the first one.
Okay, so Nicole, is it for, okay, okay, so come up and speak? Okay, who's the next one for Majestic, or what's the next name?
The next name is Ryan Martin, but I think he's for Festival.
Okay, Ryan Martin, are you for Festival or Majestic? Okay. Go ahead and.
Okay, good evening, Mayor.
We're gonna do two minutes.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, councilmembers. My name is Nicole Van, I'm a planner with MSA Consulting at Rancho Mirage. This is a project that we've been working on for about two years, and we made our first submittal in late 2016. And since that time, we've worked closely with the city staff on all aspects of the project. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank them for all of their hard work in getting us where we are right here tonight, so I appreciate that.
So are you the applicant?
The applicant's representative.
You're the applicant's representative?
Correct, yes.
Okay.
So, I'm the, I was the planner.
Oh, okay.
With a consulting firm.
So you'll get, you'll get more time, I thought you were from, just in general.
Oh, no. We believe tonight we've brought forward a quality project that's complementary to the city and the land uses currently surrounding the area. As indicated in presentation by staff, the project has three major components, which are two medical offices, a skilled nursing facility, and an assisted living. It's within close proximity to Riverside County Regional Medical Center, Kaiser Community Hospital, and we fully expect this project to provide a range of health services to many within the community. With that, we'd like to ask for your approval this evening, and we are available if there are any additional questions, thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Any other Majestic, any other speakers for the Majestic? Martin?
Rafael Burguera?
Okay, Rafael? Just let them know also, Martin, that they're gonna be speaking right now.
Five minutes or two minutes?
Uh, two minutes.
Minutes, okay. Good evening, Mayor.
The other project too.
Want to say, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents, and guests. The nice thing about seeing projects come before you, I have the opportunity to go to the Planning Commission and to learn about the project, and give my support on those projects that can do something for the city of Moreno Valley and its residents. This is one of them. Majestic is one of these projects that does well, not only for Moreno Valley, but for the region. Walmart, Riverside, you know, Hammitt, or Sun City, where we have a lot of seniors that live in this general area, especially in Riverside. We have a lot of seniors. And I know that the hospital is going to accommodate the project, and I know this project is going to accommodate the other living center that's across, right next to the hospital, because there is one already there, okay? What's nice about this project is five buildings. Five gorgeous buildings, if you looked at, if everybody got a chance to look at the project, it's going to be well-built, well-built, okay? Medical office, urgent care, three living, assisting living, and a nursing building for the nurses. You know, skilled, I mean, themselves wrote it. I'm only reading what they wrote, and I hope they keep their promise, because this is about a promise week, that they'll be skilled nursing, people with professions, people that have certificates and license. Because heaven knows, one day we wind up in one of these buildings in an emergency, just to get living assistance. So, I love this project. This project works well, especially on Nathan, very well on Nathan, thank you.
Okay, thank you Rafael. Madam Clerk?
Next person, Roy Blackard.
Okay, any other speakers for Majestic?
And Robert Palomares, those are the only two.
Okay.
Yeah, and I'm sure probably out of 210,000 people, there's probably one or two that probably would have something against this project. But I'm fully in support of it, works, and I think this shows, this is the first general plan amendment, and you're combining two projects together. But I would emphasize, this is probably something we should look at and be very careful with your general plan amendments, you only have a few. And I think this puts into emphasis why it should really be expedited, and I'm very disappointed that it's been almost a year since the budget was approved on the general plan amendment, because if we had a general plan amendment and we did work to, as I believe, take some of these, more of these properties like these two, and zone them to their highest and best use, that would be overall best for the, for the community. Then we wouldn't have these hearings, the process would be much less. The developers could come in here under, under much easier constraints to put things in, and these projects could get done faster. We need to look at all the avenues we need to bring these type of projects online faster. You're in competition with everybody and other surrounding cities. And the quicker these things get built, especially a medical complex, the faster the benefit comes to the community. So we should be looking in the future on how to do this and put in all the avenues that are gonna facilitate these type of projects being done faster, and not look behind me and see eight, 10, 12 books of unnecessary environmental impact reports, because we're going through the process that we're done. If things were done more correctly, I believe, and efficiently, we wouldn't be sitting in this situation. And I believe overall, not only would it be a benefit for the developers, it would be a benefit for everyone in the community if we look to streamline the regulations and make these projects move faster, thank you.
Okay, thank you Roy. Robert Palomares?
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, City Councilmembers and staff. This is a wonderful project. I remember when we were having the workshops regarding the medical corridor on Nathan. Well, I guess this is maybe the beginning, and like Louis says, we're years behind. So I know this is gonna be unanimous, and we gotta bring more in, like Roy says, we gotta start building, you know, we need so much in this city. And when it has to do with medical, we need even more, you know, there's a lot we can build here. So, I hope you approve it, and I'm sure you will, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and close the hearing for that, and then we'll go to council deliberation for Project One. Okay, if there's, seeing there's none, we'll go to the staff report for the Festival Project, and we will have community development.
Yes, I'd like to introduce Chris Ormsby, our Senior Planner.
Honorable Mayor, Dr. Gutierrez, and members of the City Council. The site of the specific plan, may take a moment to get it queued up here. The site of the specific plan is south of Ironwood Avenue, east of Hecop Street, and north of State Highway 60. The project area is about 50% already constructed with commercial. Basically, what is being proposed here is an expansion of the uses within certain planning areas. There is a general plan amendment, which is primarily to business park for certain planning areas. Also, the zoning would be revisited, whereas currently it's commercial, it would become a mix of uses, which allows some business park. The objective of the amendment is to revitalize the center, a festival center, by introducing a mix of uses. It's a center that's been struggling for many years, almost two decades, with the major anchors, which was the home base, which has been vacant for over 15 years, as well as the Edwards Cinema, the other major anchor there. The key elements of the specific plan include a comprehensive update of the specific plan text, updates of the permitted uses table and design guidelines, the current document is rather outmoded. Again, introduces this zoning, which allows some business park and warehousing uses. This is the specific plan layout. No real change to the exterior boundaries. It introduces the mix of uses, which allows the business park primarily in one, two, three, and four, although some very limited uses in area six as well, or I should say, area seven. Five and six do not change at all. And certainly, as I mentioned, it's a comprehensive update of the various design standards, which includes a comprehensive update of the signage for the center. Some of the existing monumentation is rather outdated, so this would be, allow for an update of the signage. A mitigated negative declaration has been prepared for the specific plan amendment. There are over 50 mitigation measures included on five environmental topics. Staff recommends the adoption of the mitigated negative declaration. In response to two comments received on the project the night of Planning Commission and the day after, there was a response to comments prepared, which was forwarded to those applicants, that was part of your package. We have in attendance tonight the applicant, Ryan Martin, who's representing Blackridge, and Mark Blajut of the Environmental Consulting Firm. Also, just to mention, there was a couple of outreach meetings held by the applicant, which were rather lightly attended. So with that, I'll open it up to questions of staff.
And do we have the applicant here today?
Yes, the applicant, Ryan Martin's here, as well as the environmental consultant.
Okay, would you like, would you like to say a few words before we get to council questions, or do you want to just? Okay.
Mayor, councilmembers, and staff, I think really the only thing I'd love to say is.
A little more into the mic?
Yeah, we, really, we just want to thank, thank the staff. Their support and, you know, advice through this process has been integral, and frankly, their input throughout this process has been immense. So, both they, as well as the economic development team, have been greatly helpful throughout the process, so that's, that's all I need to say.
Thank you. Okay, so the applicant has been given some time, we'll go ahead and bring back the staff. We'll go ahead and do council questions of staff. There's any council questions? No, not yet, not the comment yet. Then, okay, you have a council question, Marquez?
Question on the partial, question on the partial.
Okay, okay. On this one, on the Festival?
On the Festival.
Okay.
On the northwest corner of that property, and I don't know, Ryan, that portion of that property doesn't belong to you to Majestic, correct?
That is correct, I could answer that question. Actually, the owner of that property is here this evening as well, and I believe is identified as a speaker tonight, so they may be able to elaborate on, on the situation there. That particular property remains in the specific plan, but will operate under the current specific plan standards.
Okay, so, okay, I can ask them questions when they come up then. Other than that, the other piece of property is on the southwest corner, small little piece of property. They're not going to acquire that property at any time, do you know?
By the southwest, do you mean on the north side of Hemlock?
Yeah, north, be the northwest corner of Hemlock, yes.
North east, north east, yes.
It'd be the, I believe there's.
Real estate office?
Real estate offices and hairdressing place or something like that.
I believe the owner of that property is here this evening too. I don't think there's any intent to acquire that, and I mean, I'll leave it to them to answer. But I mean, it's not part of the specific plan now.
But there's no objection from them, that's also my concern also.
The owner of that particular business did speak at the planning commission and was in support of it.
Okay, 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 that's all right, thank you, thank you.
Okay, we have Councilmember Carrera.
Thank you. I do have just a few questions for the applicant, if that's okay.
The applicant can please come back?
Sorry for making you walk. Just a couple of questions. Kind of going off of what Councilmember Marquez said. If, last time when we met, it was my understanding that Eastern Municipal, I believe, owns some property adjacent to your project? And then you're doing some kind of land swap, is that still the case?
That is still correct, I don't know if we have the land use map, but the property that fronts along Hemlock, there's a portion of that adjacent to the property that Councilman Marquez had referenced, which is Jan Zapardo's property. And so that particular piece is about 1.84 acres, runs right along Hemlock. So that is going to be part of, it is part of our specific plan amendment. And then the eastern portion of what's represented is the mix of uses, Area 2, Planning Area 2. So about the half of that, the eastern half, is going to be swapped with Eastern Municipal Water District.
Okay, thank you. And then for the existing structures, can you just briefly give us your plans for the existing structures? For example, the Yoshinoya that's there, the IHOP, you know, what you plan on doing with those?
Yep, you know, all of those are our intent to stay. The IHOP is actually a parcel that we don't own, but the Yoshinoya is going to stay. Kentucky Fried Chicken is going to stay. And frankly, virtually all of the properties, you know, our intent is to have them stay. I think the only exception there would be the movie theater. And so we are talking to a few theater operators, a couple of other types of uses, but that's probably the only exception, just because there aren't nearly as many uses. But all the other buildings are going to be utilized, and frankly, many of the existing tenants that are there today will stay in place. And as we reposition the asset, renovate the buildings, we'll obviously also try to increase the quality of the tenants and the project, so.
Great, yeah, that was, I only ask because I know, I've seen many Yoshinoyas closer to LA County, who are, they're renovating their restaurants, same with IHOP. We just opened one on the south side of the city, brand new, completely renovated. So that's the only reason why I ask for that project. And that's all the questions that I have, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that'll be all, thank you. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and open the hearing. And then we'll, we have, I believe, five or six speakers, so we'll do two minutes each. Joseph Meyer, followed by Roy Blackard, and then Jan Zubardo, Zubarto? I think I said it.
Thank you Mayor and council members, my name is Joe Meyer, my company is Specific Retail Partners. And my office is in Riverside, and we own the buildings around the Walmart project at Marino Beach in the 60. We're also joint developers for the new Walmart project to the south. And we're the little brown parcel that Mr. Marquez was asking about, and we're the other owner that's contiguous to this project. So Ryan and I have been talking for several months. When we got involved in that property, the Sunnymeat Water Company owned the property. The Eastern Municipal Water District had wells in the middle of it. There was a judgment against the water company, which was very severe. There also was a blue line stream through the property. So since we got involved and subsequently acquired that parcel, we've been able to solve all three of those problems. So Eastern Municipal Water District, all the wells are moved to the east, out of the way. Your storm drain retention basin helped get rid of the blue line, and we solved the judgment. So we've been working with Ryan, his property's been here for years. I've been in the retail business out here in the Island Empire for 30 years, and we've seen the problems that is here. And when Ryan proposed what he did with the flexibility, we really were excited just to see something get going out in this area. And we think it's positive for us, we've been talking about different access, different things, and being involved with signs together. And so we're very, very positive about this, and we think that his project could kickstart this area. And so we were supportive at planning commission, and we're supportive here. And so we look forward to a favorable vote from you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Joseph. We have Roy Blackard, and then if Jan and then James could get ready?
This is another project that, you know, as it's proposed, you see what the domino effect is. You know, another property owner looks at it, okay, there's development going on. You know, now we're excited, we're looking to plan to do other things. It's something that has been lacked a lot in this city. And I think from a lot of standpoints, people have looked at things or opposed it. But you're seeing a turnaround in this city, you're not seeing the big opposition as you used to see from stopping projects like this, or raising up all kinds of concerns that why we can't do something. Possibly this could be a turning point, I hope it is. I hope everybody starts working together more across the city, because really, the fate of all of us depend on it, everybody that lives here, everybody that works here. And if we don't get on board, or encourage projects, or bring quality projects into our city, we've seen the result, the opposite result, when we've had, you know, lots of strife or conditions, or bringing up a lot of extraneous issues that have caused a lot of angst in the community. And I believe that has drawn a lot of people that would invest in this city away from this city. So I hope that you approve this project, just like you approved the last one, and we start looking to see how we can facilitate making this type of development, this type of projects, and for everyone in this community, so we can have a better and brighter Marino Valley. Thank you.
Okay, yes.
Good evening, Council, Jan Zapardo. I represent our family specifically for the northeast parcel of Heacock and Hemlock. It's a 9,000 square foot building. I wanted to comment on this festival project. It was exciting when it broke ground over 20 years ago. And I think at that time, things were a little constrained with the zoning and such. And I want to applaud you for having an open enough mind to let the flexibility for this project move forward. I think that's what they're going to need to react to some of the market that is out there. So I'm here to say that we fully support the proposal of the festival and the changes. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Jan.
James Ross, followed by Rafael Burguera San Luis Palomares.
Your honor, the mayor, and members of the City Council, thank you for letting me address you tonight. I've been a resident here for 32 years now. When I got here, I think it was five signal lights. I live in a area called Sunnymeat Ranch, and the speakers that I've heard here tonight, I'm so glad that I came. But I was getting very disappointed, and I have to say that, because I thought I was in the wrong place, because nobody seemed to know anything about what this was going to take place here. And this lady right back here, thank God, that she finally got the answer for me to say, I am in the right place. But nobody else would tell me, it was like they were afraid to do it. But as the speakers go, I agree with them 100%, because I have been in the festival for 16 years, my wife and I own a business there, a beauty salon. No, I don't do hair, my wife does, and my daughter does. And that place has gone down, and I saw it when it was a boomtown. And now it is an eyesore. So what they're talking to you about this evening, I hope that you will give this some serious thought and agree with what they're presenting to you this evening. That is something that we need in Marino Valley, and I thank you.
Thank you, James. Next two speakers is Rafael, and then if Luis, if you could please be ready?
I was given advice just now from the lady that just left to tone my voice. Some people think that I'm yelling when I talk loud, so I'm going to try to talk softly. That's very hard for me. I went to the planning commission on this project. How many of us that lived in this city for at least 25 years, 20, 25 years or more, remember the home base? Home base, that was the place to go. Everybody was there, it was booming, it was true. You know what saves that today, the Fiesta? IHOP and Kentucky Fried Chicken. Saves that place from going, from being abandoned, and the gentleman's wife and a couple of boutiques that are open there, that you can hardly see unless you drive real slow off the freeway, then you'll see them way in the back in the corner. Finally, that part of town, that is a historic part of town. It's been around for a long, long time, Heacock. It has meaning, if you look it up. That family's been here since 1890, goes back many, many years. It's finally going to get a facelift, a new look. We're going to demolish one building, and the planning commission agree to demolishing the building. It's old, it's been there for 15, 20 years, it's never been used. Think about the termites, the rats, the things that get in. The sheet rock, the wood, everything gets old and rotten. You have to take things down and start all over. Thank goodness that the Fiesta developers and people that have interest in that neighborhood are going to finally give us a new look when we drive down the 60 freeway past Heacock. We're going to be able to look over to our right and see something bright and brand new, thank you.
Thank you Rafael, Luis Palomares?
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow, this is a great thing, I thank the developers, I really thank the developers. And the hard work of the staff and the council, and Mike Lee, he brings a lot of these businesses and these projects to our city. And I mean, golly, we're up and running, we're running this last couple of years. I'm excited what's happening in our community. And I look at that place all the time, because I go by there, I live up the hill from there, and I see it all the time. It looks pretty rundown, and like Rafi has said, because of the IHOP that's keeping it glued together, you know, it's going to look great once they do those buildings up again, and refurbish them, and everything they got to do with them. I'm so glad that there's going to be some change, especially when you're getting off the freeway, you know, it's going to look great. I'm so glad, thank you, Council, thank you, staff, thank you, Mr. Developer, thank you again.
Thank you.
No more speakers, Mayor.
Okay, we'll go ahead and close the hearing and then move to deliberation, if desired. All right, so we'll go ahead and take these motions, some of these separately. So I'll entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number three and four.
So moved.
Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Councilmember Carrera. It's passed 5 to 0. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendations number five and six, which is the negative declaration, the monitoring plan for project number two. Motion by Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Marquez. Please vote. And, okay, let's see, 5-0. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number seven, the general plan amendment for project number one and number two, and the land use designations. Motion by Marquez, second by Baca. Please vote. I entertain a motion by council, and that passes 5-0. To approve staff recommendations number eight, which is the specific plan for the festival project. Motion by Marquez, second by Carrera. Please vote. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number nine, which is the first reading for the zone change. Motion by Carrera, second by Marquez. And that passes 5-0. I entertain a motion by council to approve staff's recommendation number 10, which is the first reading zone change for project two. A motion by Marquez, second by Carrera. Please vote. Okay, what was the vote on that one? 5-0, 5-0? Pat?
Yes, 5-0.
All right, and then I entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendations number 11 through 14, which include the tentative track map for project one, the master plan, the plot plans, and the conditional use permits.
So moved.
A motion by Baca, Mayor Pro Tem Baca, second by Councilmember Marquez. That'll be the last one for that one. Okay, please vote on this one, items 11 through 14. It's passed 5-0. Okay, congratulations to the applicant. Okay, we're going to move on to a public hearing to review and consider CDBG home and ESG project selections for inclusion in the fiscal year 2018-2019 annual action plan. We'll have a report of Financial Management Services Department, Marshall Ironman.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, City Council members. The item this evening is to address the public hearing to consider the CDBG home and ESG funding for fiscal year 2018 and 19. Every year, the city is required to submit an annual action plan to the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, otherwise known as HUD. The annual action plan identifies how these grant programs, the CDBG home and ESG, will be utilized to provide programs that provide projects that benefit low and moderate income households and neighborhoods in the community. There is a detailed report that shows how the funding is proposed to be allocated among the sub recipients. What I wanted to kind of walk through is a couple of the changes from prior years. As we look at the home investment partnership, this is utilized for affordable housing projects and related items. The city is anticipating to receive just slightly over $500,000 in fiscal year 1819. What we're looking at is continuing the Salvation Army, the $120,000 that would go to their Brush with Kindness program. The remaining funds would be retained for future affordable housing projects as we work with developers to identify those projects and move forward. With the city's Emergency Solutions Grant, that grant is focused on homeless services. In this area, we are estimating to receive about $174,000 in the fiscal year. These funds are similar with, it's funding similar to prior years, and we're looking at progressing, moving forward with the same projects that we did last year. That includes a homeless management information system, funding the Salvation Army, a portion that works towards their homeless-to-work program, along with Catholic charities and U.S. Vets. The last item is our Community Development Block Grant Program, which will receive about $1.9 million in that. $1.9 million in that area. Part of this is restricted. A maximum of 15% goes towards public services. And what we're looking at in this area is increasing, we have two adjustments from the prior year. One is to increase the MOVAN amount. Previously, we funded about $35,000, $37,000 in prior years. We're looking to increase that up to $41,000 to offset some other increased operational costs for the MOVAN program. And additionally, we're looking at funding an Operation School Bell of $10,000, and this would provide different materials, supplies, clothing, similar items to schoolchildren for their, that are at need of those items prior to entering school. The rest of the components remain to address different things, including food, shelter, police with the Operation Holiday Cheer and those items. The other 65% goes more into capital improvements in the city, and we're looking to really focus this year on street improvements. Historically, we have a component of the capital improvements that go towards ADA improvements, ramps at intersections. This year, based on some of the needs in the community, we're able to allocate a portion of that to street improvements in certain communities that are within that CDBG boundary. And also looking at making one change where historically we funded code enforcement services out of CDBG, we're looking to move that funding towards facility ADA improvements. That'll work well within HUD's guidelines, allow us distinct projects for the documentation of those. And by moving code into the general fund where those ADA projects were previously funded, it allows greater flexibility. They're no longer restricted to just the CDBG project boundaries, and this will allow them to be more responsive to the needs in the community. With those areas too, I did want to note that as we present these items to council, those numbers are estimates based on preliminary items from HUD. We do identify in each of the sections where any adjustments would occur. As we look at any adjustments, say, HUD increases our number 3%. In the ESG grant, we would focus on using any surplus there to increase the amount proposed for the U.S. Vets program. And then when we're looking at CDBG, that would hit the Police Department with Operation Holiday Cheer, along with some of our capital improvements there. Now, the report was presented to the Finance Subcommittee. We did invite all of the sub recipients and applicants to make comments and provide additional details to the Finance Subcommittee at that time. That was completed on March 27. We received a lot of feedback that was all positive in those directions. I do believe we do have some sub recipients or applicants here this evening that would like to provide comments or public comment. But following tonight's evening, or tonight's staff report, as we move forward with this public hearing, we would then be revisiting city council on May 1 with an additional public hearing. Following that, we'd be able to submit the annual action plan to HUD as part of our submittal for fiscal year 1819. And with that, that concludes my report.
Okay, we'll go ahead and move straight to council questions of staff. I'm gonna open the hearing. Madam Clerk, any public testimony?
Yes, sir. We have three. Joy Juarez, Jessica Munoz, and Tom Donahue.
We'll go ahead and do two minutes each. Please come up.
Let me know if you can't hear me. Yeah, so my name is Joy, and I work for Boys and Girls Clubs of Greater Redlands Riverside. We have operated a site at Casitas Del Valle, which is a public housing complex on Lamos Place, which is between Indian and Paris, which I believe is a part of the city's target area for CDBG funding this year. We've operated the site since 2012, and it's open to all youth in, technically in the city. Mostly, it serves youth who live in the housing site. So we applied for CDBG funding for, to fund our programs there this year. Part of it would be to pay for memberships for the kids. We only technically charge them $25 a year for membership, and obviously, it costs a lot more than that to run our programs for the kids. We were not recommended for CDBG funding this year, and I know you guys have a very tall task as far as deciding how to allocate a very limited amount of money under public services and then under youth services. But we do offer youth services, low or free, low, low-cost or free services to youth after school. So we would just maybe ask for reconsideration as far as funding. We requested $20,000, but obviously, we know you have a very limited amount of funds. So just want to thank you for the chance to apply, and again, maybe reconsider because we do serve low-income youth in Moreno Valley and inside the HUD target area. Thank you.
Thank you, Joy. Next speaker is Jessica Munoz, and then Tom Donahue.
Good evening, mayor and council. Thank you so much for this opportunity to address you this evening, and most of all, thank you for your partnership the last two years through the CDBG program. My name is Jessica Munoz, and I'm speaking on behalf of Voices for Children. We are the court-appointed special advocate program for Riverside County. That means that we have the unique privilege of recruiting, training, and supporting very special volunteer advocates called CASAS to advocate for children and sibling groups in foster care. I say we're unique because we are the only agency in Riverside County authorized to provide this service to the community. So if a child in Moreno Valley has a special advocate assigned to them, that advocate is supervised and supported by our staff. I think we understand that the child welfare system is overburdened, and the unique resource that our volunteers provide is an ability to get to know a child on a one-on-one basis, and then leverage that relationship through their authority provided by the court in order to ensure that the professionals, the social workers, the teachers, the attorneys who are making decisions about the child are able to do so in their best interests. I understand that there are many resources that are needed from the city. I would ask you to consider that national data tells us that children with CASAS are more likely to find stable housing, to be employed, and to not have contact with law enforcement when they exit the system. Those are all resources for which the city is responsible, and we hope not only to change the lives of some of your most vulnerable residents in the short term, but along with changing those lives, to also save the city dollars so that they can invest in other programs and services in the long run. So we thank you for your partnership, and we ask that you follow the staff recommendations to fund us again this year.
Thank you, Jessica. Tom Donahue, please.
Good evening, Mayor Gutierrez, council staff. My name is Tom Donahue. I'm the program administrator for Family Service Association and our senior nutrition program. As you know, we provide meals at your First Street Senior Center for quite a number of years, and thank you for your past support, and we appreciate staff's recommendation for continued support for 2018 and 19. When we presented the data in the report, we looked at our projections, and it was about 10% growth, high to 10%. We anticipate the silver tsunami coming this way to the region. But this year, that silver tsunami crested, and we hit the beach with a really great crest coming into it. In Moreno Valley, we're growing over 23% in the number of seniors that we serve. We served last year about 30,000 meals. We're approaching 40,000 meals between homebound and seniors and that we deliver at home and at the center. And we do this not alone, but we do this in partnership. The programming and services that you provide at the center are unbelievable. If you go to the senior center at any given day, staff is programming. There are dances and exercise class going on. There's movies. All the side rooms are full of activated seniors, and this is helping us to keep the seniors, to provide them with a quality of life where they can age in place with equality and dignity. And this is something that you should be very proud of. As you look to see the new development that's coming in, protecting those that have been living in the city for a number of years, and providing them the services to keep them active citizens, and also to keep them out of our hospitals and out of emergency rooms, and keep them in their homes for a longer period of time. We appreciate your support in keeping the funding at the level. But we do ask that if funding does increase as it comes down from the federal government and HUD, that you do consider, because of the growth that we are experiencing, this unprecedented growth, particularly here. You are the largest area and city that we serve in the area.
Thank you, Tom. Thank you.
So thank you very much for your support.
Family services. Okay. All right. So I'm gonna close the hearing. Okay, and if there's any council deliberation if desired. And I do want to remind the council that the staff did have the opportunity to come to us multiple times, you know, to receive our input. And then we also had this at the Finance Committee as well, and we also recommended it from the Finance Committee. Okay, Councilmember Cabrera?
Yes, I just want to say thank you to Marshall and your team. We met for the second time. We actually had two meetings to go over the list of all the organizations that are being funded. I did just want to point out again, the homeless-to-work program, how we're funding that, and it's, it's coming to fruition. These, these homeless folks are finally starting to get into permanent jobs. So the program is working, and I just want to thank, thank you for helping out with that. And that's all I have.
Mayor Protem Baca?
Yes, I just want to say that we do receive these funds, and we need, we need to be very careful on how we distribute them, and there's a process that we have. It's an internal process, and everyone's ranked, and there's a lot of nonprofits and other community groups, for example, the targeted areas to prevent blight and other improvements to our community. So it's, it's, I wish that we could fund every single person that applies. I know that you all have great projects, but we're limited in the amount of monies that we receive, and if it doesn't all come in, we still have to reconsider what we're doing. But thank you for, thank you to everyone that's applied, and congratulations to the people that were funded this year. And don't give up. I mean, you apply every single year. So thank you with it.
Okay, Councilmember Guyba?
Thank you. I think you got my text or my email. Federal government has increased amount of the CDBG grant at this point in time to the amount of $3.3 billion. So it sounds like it's gonna remain on, on our docket for a while. That was a concern I had when I spoke with you. And I'm very pleased to see that Voices for Children was still back on. We brought that in when I was on the Finance Subcommittee, so I'm very pleased to see that they're getting the continued financing. Thanks.
Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. I just want to say two things. I want to thank Marshall for the very well job you put together here. As I said, on the Finance Subcommittee, it's very hard for me to sit there and deny funds for, for these organizations, as Mayor Protem said. It's, I wish we can give money to everybody, but it's, our hands are tied, and then the government, federal and state governments, just don't want to release more money than they should. So it's hard. It's very hard. And I want to thank those people that applied, especially the people who came out to the Finance Subcommittee. And I want to say thank you for them to come out. And again, keep on trying, try, and if we get more money, we'll definitely look at reconsidering and, and giving you some money. Second of all is, I had a comment or statement made to me recently at a Subcommittee. I had asked that we take some money from the Salvation Army and give it to the vet organization. I thought I had explained the reason why, but let me explain to you again. When it comes to veterans, I'd do anything for them. I'm a veteran myself, two years in Vietnam. Yeah, it's, it's hard. It's hard to take money out or give money or take money from an organization. But the reason I requested that is because if you go on base, just recently, we had a grand opening or a ribbon cutting for the new, the new homeless, I call them hotels on base. You would see what these, these veterans struggle to survive in this economy that we have. And as much money is, I mean, I wish I could give them a lot more money. But Salvation Army does a lot. I understand they do. But at the same time, you gotta stop and think, we need, we need to help our veterans, especially our homeless veterans. So I just wanted to put that out there, that, that, yeah, you, I ask to take away from an organization that's, that's worldwide. I understand that. But my concern was really for the VA or the veterans. So I just wanted to put it out there. Thank you.
And I just want to thank Marshall and your department for, for working on this and really working with WILDAN as well, and the ranking. Like Mayor Protem Baca said, you know, we do have a ranking system. And so, you know, you do have to get a high score, and then from there, then there's the recommendations as well. Okay, so I'll go ahead and close the deliberation. Entertain a motion by council to approve staff recommendation, number two.
So moved.
Okay, moved by Mayor Protem Baca. Okay, second by Councilmember Guyba. Okay, go ahead and please vote. And that's approved five, zero, five to zero. We're gonna move to G2. I'm gonna move to G2, which is the project list, the additional funding for the roads. And that's Report of Public Works.
Good evening, mayor, members of the council. Thank you. This item before you this evening is the resolution establishing a project list for fiscal year 2018, 2019 SB1 funding. We'll follow a very similar process as was for last year for fiscal year 1718. So for next year, for fiscal year 1819, we anticipate receiving $3.4 million of SB1 funding. The process requires that the governing body, the council, approve a resolution that's established by the California Transportation Commission. We're required to submit a resolution with the proposed project list to, to the CTC, the California Transportation Commission, by May 1. They anticipate approving that in June and sending that on forward to the state comptroller for final approval, with funding available come July 1 of this fiscal year, or July 1 of this year. And it is a reimbursement format, so we have to spend the money to get it back. The proposed street segments are listed as the attachment A, and they're also shown up on the map here on the presentation. We are focusing in, again, on arterial streets. We are looking for streets that have low pavement condition index, PCI, high ADT, which is the average daily traffic, and high maintenance cost, also some longstanding requests for repairs, and we also took council input as well. On that list, we have what we're calling alternative, or standby, if you will. Those are to be ready if there, we get favorable bids and we need to fund additional projects. And also, if we find another funding source, I wanted to be ready with projects in case that would occur. If we follow a very aggressive schedule, we should be able to finish the design and bid that out this summer, and then constructing it in fall of this year. So staff does recommend adopting the resolution, approving the proposed list. I do want to make mention that there are some very specific requirements that the CTC requires on the resolution. We had to make a minor adjustment to Appendix A, so council got today a copy of that, those changes, so we just added some information that specifically requested. That concludes my presentation. Available to answer any questions.
Okay, thank you so much. We'll go straight to council questions of staff. Okay, and again, council questions. Okay, I'll go, Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, thank you, mayor. Mike, SB1, you mentioned, we had received 1.2 previously. That money is not, we don't have to pay it back if it gets appealed.
Well, we, we are eligible for 1.2 million, and it is a reimbursement format, so we have not spent that money yet. So there's not been any specific information about whether or not what happens if it does get repealed, but we are eligible for $1.2 million in fiscal year 1718. Again, it's a reimbursement process, so we have to spend that money to get it back. And I don't know if Marshall knows anything specific, but I think that's the most up-to-date information that we have.
Yeah, because just recently, the League of Cities, that was brought up at one of our meetings, and one of the... our meetings, and one of the, I don't know what his position was, but had mentioned about if it was repealed SB1 in November, but the money that's been distributed already to the cities would not be, it's not, you don't have to pay it back, in other words, it's yours to keep. So, with that, knowing that, anything after that, or before the election, let's say we get money in July of the fiscal year coming, and we get, what is it, a million, two more, or a million four, what was that?
For fiscal year 1819, we're 3.4 million is our SB1 funded, that's our formula-based SB1 funded.
So, if we spend some of that money, and then it gets repealed, we still don't have to pay it back, because it's prior to the election, November election. Is there a possibility that we might be able to use that money, so we don't fall in that category if it does? I hope not. But are we looking to push this, to get this, these roads repaired with that money?
Yeah, it's all our intention to have an aggressive schedule so that we can secure that money, and we've asked those questions to the folks that we know at the CTC, and Marshall's folks, or Marshall's asked some folks as well. It's our understanding, if we have an obligation in place, that they'll be reimbursed. Again, it's a reimbursement, so we have to get that project going and constructed to get that reimbursement money back.
That's good.
Councilmember, if I may, just echo our concurrence with this, we've been working with the League of California Cities, trying to monitor anything happening with any tax measures or any recall measures in the future. So, we've been given direction from them to pursue this as aggressively as we can, make sure that the projects are getting out there in the public. This is what the funds were approved for, and so we want to make sure we're meeting that need.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor.
Okay, Councilmember Carrera?
Thank you, that was my main question as well, I don't want to repeat it all, but just, you know, if we're gonna get those funds, and we're gonna fix these streets, you know, any kind of payment back to the state or anything, so you pretty much answered the question already, thank you.
And I won't ask my question either, it was the same that Marquez asked. Okay, Councilmember Gaiba?
Thank you. Michael, we had that discussion, and I asked you to reconsider the Pigeon Pass. I'd like to just reiterate the fact that with the new stadium being built up and hit in the canyon, that going only to Swan, and not going all the way up to Old Lake, or future, it's already have a lot of damage due to the trucks and everything that have been hauling dirt out of there for the new stadium and everything. Have you considered that, or will you consider that? Because that road is getting a tremendous amount of use now and in the future. I would hate to see that whole street and the road, and the damage is going to be, because you're gonna have football games, soccer games, all those things, and you have junior high, now you have the little nar homes have almost sold out. So, the traffic up there is tremendous, as opposed to maybe the traffic down Hemlock or Sunnymead, maybe, but Hemlock is not used the same fashion, except for the In-N-Out, I get that. You know, so I would ask that you reconsider to go all the way to Old Lake on this plan, because I think that would be reasonable and expected for that area. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, public comments?
Yes, sir, we have three, two speakers, Rafael Burguerras and Roy Blackard.
Alright. Okay. Roy's already here, okay.
Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, guests in residence. Since we're asking for favors, I would like to ask for a favor. How about fixing Moreno Beach, down to Cottonwood, and all the way? It's okay, I probably got it in my mind in two minutes, I think. Since we're doing favors, and we're on the alternative street of being repaired, we're having trouble, because there's thousands of people that drive off that Moreno Beach Drive, and there's only two lanes, one going up to Little Canyon, and one coming down. And if you go there through today, you see a lot of potholes, and all the dirt that comes off the mountains, or off the hill. You know, we need that fixed too. And actually, we need a light, actually on Bay now, because if, people were complaining about JFK being fast in front of the school, you know, people do 60 miles, this one, we do 70, because I'm part of it. If I get a chance to go down that hill pretty fast, until I get caught, I'll tell you the truth, a lot of people go down that street, I don't care who lives in that neighborhood. You're doing 50, 60 sometimes, not intentionally, but you still do it, because that's the flow, that's just the flow of traffic there, okay? If they could find a way to get around you, they would do it, but that's just the flow. And what's happening is, the people that live on Bay, on the left side of those new homes that I live in, and the residents in that area, can't get across easy, without, you know, shoot across. We have to time everything, we have to look for gaps, you know, that should be something done, a light there, finally, one day, besides the street fix. But I thank the staff, because I had an opportunity to go through it, I mean, I went through the whole list, I mean, he put all the names down. We're never gonna get all the streets done, because we have 1,955 streets in Moreno Valley that probably have trouble. And if the government gives us only so much money, and we only get 1.2 million dollars of that, I mean, you know, we have to find another way. This is why we are approving land changes, allowing large buildings to be built, hospitals, so we can bring additional revenue, so we can use that for our roads and lights. We need to slow things down, I mean, if I ever get caught, I do my time, you know, I'll plead guilty, you know, to it, I'm not afraid, but I gotta get caught first, just like everybody else. Thanks.
Thanks, Rafael.
Again, I don't see the pertinent questions asked. If the gas tax gets repealed, and you are putting projects in, and the sum total of all the state of California is more than the money you've got, they can reimburse all you want, there is a problem here. And static analysis, like I say, will kill you 98.7% of the time, but that's what you were entrusted to do. You were entrusted to ask these questions of these and your other representatives, like our CTC's Ann Mayer, which was down there advocating for cities and stuff to back not repealing the gas tax, because you should know, because I've told you at this day, at this podium, and many other times, they are ripping us 100%. They have diverted gas tax money that should have been fixing these roads, the reason you don't have them fixed is because of the policies through the state of California advocated by this body in the League of California Cities. What day are you gonna pull out of that corrupt agency? That's the day you will start turning this around. When you look at the crossing guard situation, we could have funded that for one quarter of what we're doing. That could have fixed a lot of roads and a lot of slurry seal for many years, and we continue to do the insane policy of spending list plus 10%. We could have put half a million dollars in our roads on that and provided more crossing guards if we had applied free market principles, and that is the problem. The problem is not that we're not collecting enough money, because that is not the government's money, it came out of yours and my pockets, and that should be no further or no bigger deal than this is tax day, April 17th, the day they are pulling it out of you. And if you are using our assets inefficiently at every corner, that's why we don't have what we have. Are we going to finance an impact that Moreno Valley Unified School District from a decision they made on a stadium that you supported? Why didn't you require them to mitigate the traffic impacts that they are going to, that they have created, and the additional impacts that they are creating with the football stadium? That's why we're in the condition we're in, that has happened for 30-plus years in this city. We played a backseat to the state, we've acquiesced to a school district that keeps dictating to you at every corner, and you keep backing off. When are you going to stand up for us? When are you gonna march down to 25634 Alessandro and say that? Because all across the board, we need to fix it all, and we need to fix it right.
Any other speakers?
More speakers, Mayor.
No more, okay. I'll enter, actually, we'll go to council deliberation. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to approve task recommendation number one.
So moved.
It moved by Mayor Protembaka, second by Mayor, Councilmember Marquez. Okay, it's approved for yes, one no. Okay, and we'll go ahead and take a five-minute recess. Welcome back to our city council meeting, tonight, April 17, 2018, just came back from a recess. We finished our last item, which was G2, and now we're gonna go straight into our consent calendar. We're going to move to our joint consent calendar, sections A through D on the agenda, which are considered to be routine and non-controversial. Any members would like any items pulled, please go ahead and push the button. Okay, oops, sorry, Councilmember Gaiba?
Yeah, 12 and 13.
12 and 13. Okay, and just to, okay, any other, any other ones? Okay, just to give a friendly reminder to the council, and then also to the public, on item A13, I just want to remind everyone that this item is on the agenda as a follow-up to two closed sessions that took place at the last two council meetings. This item only deals with the terms of the individual contracts for the three employees of the city council. Laws that protect privacy rights preclude any discussion regarding performance, evaluations, or other personnel matters in a public meeting. Any such discussion is limited to closed session setting. Breach of the rules that keep personnel matters confidential may expose the city to liability. Okay, any items on consent items for discussion? Seeing none, okay, we'll go to public comments on consent items other than 12 and 13. Madam Clerk?
Rafael Burguerras and Roy Blackard.
Okay, if we could have the speakers ready, please? Rafael, and then Roy? Except item 12 and 13.
With your permission, Mayor, are we gonna have the non-agenda?
We will, right after this.
After this, okay. Thank you.
We're just going backwards tonight because of all the big projects that we were doing.
Alright, then I gotta go backwards too. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening again, councilmembers, staff, residents, and guests. I want to talk about something that popped up while I was looking through the consent calendar on Friday, and I want to talk about A9 and A10, because they are alike in wording, okay? We're gonna make KMB Homes sign an agreement about water, okay? The maintaining agreement is necessary to guarantee long-term funding for public maintenance of a landscaping to ensure continual access to the water quality basin. Now, with that said, I went to the meeting on Thursday for the golf course, and one hour and 19 minutes into that conversation, Commissioner Sim asked a question to Eric, who's representing Bridge, on water, between the well and recycled water. What startled me was when Eric tried to explain to all of us that the water rights, that someone else had water rights besides him. So, my question is, are we gonna to allow Bridge not have a term like KMB, long-term? Because I saw a lot of sad people that day, that were giving up their rights to have their view for the golf course, should have seen it. People were willing to give up their view to have the golf course, and that's okay, but their commitment was water, just like here, like A9. Are we gonna have them give us that kind of commitment, instead of only 10 years? Because Bridge is gonna sell it to Diamond, is Diamond gonna have the water rights? Who's gonna own the water rights on that golf course after 10 years? That's important, because if we're committing KMB to do 30 years of maintenance, then we should have Bridge, because if they want about $250,000 every year to get back, because everything went well, then maybe we could have 20 years, it's 30, 30, and give them only $125,000. Okay, they can do that, they have the money. We got to ensure that people get their rights, they gave up something.
Thank you, Rafael. Go to Roy.
A7, the utility rates. Again, I've asked it many times, where I just want to state for the record my opinion, and I'm no lawyer or give legal advice, but due to Prop 26, a public electricity provider is only allowed to charge for cost of service. That should have nothing to do with Southern California Edison, which is a, which is a, which is a company, a private company, but regulated by the government with a 13% profit built in to pay the investors. You have a conflict in your contract that says you have to provide for that, but there's an obvious, if you're basing your rates on a company that has got a 13% profit, how does that square with the regulations of Prop 26, that say a public-owned utility by a city or municipality cannot charge more for cost of service?
Thank you, Roy. And Madam Clerk, anymore?
No more.
And I'll ask the city manager's office, or someone from staff to reach out to Roy, to see if you can get that answer, and also to Rafael, just to provide a response, if you don't have one already, you know, or if you need to research it a little bit. Thanks. Alright. Okay, I entertain a motion to approve excluding items 12 and 13 for separate action.
So moved.
Okay, motion by Mayor Protembaka, second by Carrera, please vote. Yes, approved 5-0. Okay, we'll go to item A12, which is actually Section F, the second reading, again, this is the second reading, so this is why it's on the consent calendar. Okay, so any questions to staff? Okay, any public comments on this one, Madam Clerk?
Yes, we have Rafael Burguerras and Roy Blackard on both items.
Okay. Do we have them for any other items after that?
Just 12 and 13, and then again in public comments.
And non-agenda, okay, so if you guys can stick around so that we're ready to go. Okay, so this is the second reading for the cannabis.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, staff, and residents. Good evening, Mayor, council members, staff, and residents. I downloaded, I, oh, somebody was tall, I don't know. I downloaded that, once again, the, the land, and now the store level, as I called it, cannabis. Are we talking about?
This is just the second reading from what we passed?
Okay, that's, so it's not it, so I'm gonna excuse myself.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Roy? On A twelve?
Again, second bite at the apple. As Councilmember Baca said at the original hearing, the micro businesses were the Apple Store classiest ones there. I still, as the ordinance was amended, I still think it was amended incorrectly, that, and you limited them to only two of the twenty-seven or eight that you approved. Again, throughout the whole process, you're not allowing the free market to work. If you're gonna allow those businesses in, first, you have many restrictions to do that. Land use, CUPs, why even have a, a limit on them? Why not let the free market decide what's going to be? Why not give yourself more options? It's just like the complete development projects or stuff we've seen before. If you allow yourself more options, or you do the correct policy first, we're not back here sitting with loads of books and having to re-imend the process. As Pete said many times, this dais for over thirty years, a lot of times never had the opportunity or did the right thing, but we always came back and redid it again, and usually at a severe cost to the community. So we should be looking at each time when we put these things together, how things work, how things are gonna work the best, how things are gonna work the most efficiently. When you set a direction to do it, the council should have the ability, and that's what your elected position was to do, was to analyze this and give the direction to staff on how to do it, not the other way around. They are not, as efficiently as they may be to do the nuts and bolts, they're not as efficient, or maybe have the experience or knowledge to know how the free market works, or know how to put those policies in place. That's what your job is. Your job is to ask the pertinent questions and put the policies in place, and then send it to them for the direction, not have them go out and ask, well, is this possible, that possible, and all these other things. So when you put these things together, let's do them right the first time. Let's do them with the best chance they have to be successful in all these things. And when we do that, and let's look at and put, and I believe, and I've said this before, the reason behind this is, okay, a lot of these people, a lot of communities are not allowing these type of businesses, or micro businesses in particular. And those are probably some, maybe some of your best profit centers and best value to the community. So why would you make them the most restricted or restrict their use to the most? Makes no sense. I'd like to hear the reason why you did it.
Madam Clerk, anymore?
No more speakers.
All right, so we'll go ahead and, um, any deliberation? Go ahead and press your request to speak. Okay, entertain a motion to approve A twelve, which is the ordinance nine-three-three, second reading.
So moved.
A motion by Mayor Pro Tembaca. Okay, second by Cabrera. Okay, please vote. Okay, and it's approved four to one. We're gonna move to A thirteen, report of city attorney, amendments to the employment agreements for city clerk, city manager, and city attorney. And again, any discussion does have to be in relation to the terms of the contract for the three employees, and nothing related to performance, evaluations, or personnel matters. City attorney, or did you have any little?
Certainly, Honorable Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council members, the item is before you here pursuant to your direction to standardize the three contracts for the three of your employees. One of the changes is the additional salary for the city clerk, which came out of the, her evaluation, and then standardizing, standardizing all of the terms other than salary in all three contracts, basically the time of leave, the accrual, the ability to use the city vehicle or car allowance, the buyback, as well as the ninety-day post-election freeze period on termination. I'll answer any questions you may have on this.
Okay, we'll go straight to council questions. Any council questions, press your request to speak. Okay, Councilmember Marquez?
Yeah, um, pardon? None, how the words I want to put it? You, you got a group of individuals from a department. And what I'm basically getting to is, is it legal or not legal? To categorize each individual from each department for their benefits. In other words, if we're getting, giving a city manager a benefit, is it not, it's not illegal to give the city attorney or the city clerk the same, the same benefits, correct? I mean, that's not illegal, is it?
It is not all three, assuming that there are legal benefits to start with, but differences, differences between the three benefits, anything can be negotiated to be either the same or to be different. We are at-will employees, contract employees of the city councils, so whatever terms we negotiate with the council with regard to our contracts are permissible.
Okay. It has nothing to do with your education, has nothing to do with work, work experience. It's, if you're that individual who's qualified for that job, it, it, it doesn't, it's none of that, correct? I mean, again, getting back to legal status, it...
I, I think that it's, it's to the discretion of the council.
Discretion.
I, I, I think that it's not a square box that you put something in. I mean, it's, it's, it's a discretionary negotiation, so council has the ability to negotiate.
Exactly.
Any amendments or any changes to, to any of the three contracts.
Okay, that's all I wanted to clarify, thank you.
All right, any public comments on this one?
Yes, sir, we have Rafael Burguerras and Roy Blackard.
You got some public comments, Pat? Okay. On the three, the other two, you guys, too, let's see.
Staff, residents, and guests. I pulled their rap sheet, and I have it on black and white, about their duties, performance, and things like that. You know what? Every individual that is on my left-hand side has the given right to do, to get their very best from the, from the City of Moreno Valley residents. It's all about the residents and the taxpayers. They have that given right, just like a ball player, a basketball player. They get hundreds of millions of dollars to throw a ball. They get several hundred thousands, more or less, to help us move this city forward. Whatever position, duties, or terms they come up with is fine with me, because I seen their performance, and the City of Moreno Valley has seen the performance. Matter of fact, the City of Moreno Valley seeing the actions in the street when we drive by, and people are working, buildings are being built, and all buildings are being repaired. That's the actions of this staff coming to you to get those approvals. The only thing I do, like many residents that I've learned about Thursday, we do go over the agenda, and we try to make sure that it's fair for everybody. This is what I like about my staff. They do their job, so whatever they get, they deserve every bit of it, and I hope they do well for the rest of the time they're here with us, because we need professional men and women to do their best for the City of Moreno Valley, and that's all we ask, that they do their best. It's not about the money, if your ethics are bad. It's about the performance that they give us, and then the rewards come after. And I hope they get what they want, or what they need, actually, more what they need, okay? That's what I'm hoping for, for them, because they deserve every bit of it, and I'm glad to be talking about them and supporting them, and that's why I'm here. That's why I pick A thirteen, to talk about them, and the three that we want. The mayor, the manager, our city attorney, and definitely Pat. Pat's been the heart of this chamber, and we want to keep her here. That's what we want, thank you.
And the two of you are the glue. No, I'm just, okay, all right, just, okay. All right, Roy?
A thirteen's very interesting, and this the other half of the stereo duo tonight, but, uh, when you're looking at negotiations, okay? You want some more money? How about this? Let's tie it to performance, and this is how the free market works. Want to increase? Let's put it on the line. You got a thirty-day at-will employee. We just had a recent deal, I don't know what it cost us, two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand, three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars. Performance of a city manager was glowing, three months later, out the door. Bottom line, let's tie this to performance, because if you're doing your job, you got no worries. But let's not hamstring another council like previous councils have been done before with long-term contracts and ridiculous buyouts that it costs the taxpayers hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, to get rid of, for whatever reason, non-performing or whatever. Don't take that ability away from you. Don't take that constraint away from another council. Yo, you guys are not gonna live forever. You're not gonna be sitting in those seats forever. The election could change. Every two years, the majority of that dais can change under our current law. So you should look at that, because the only ability you have to really affect the city government is those three positions, because from there on down the line, pretty much everyone else, you have no ability to go in there and run the nuts and bolts of that. But your main cog is, can we take, can we remove the city manager or not in a city manager council form of government? So that's what I'm saying. Why constrict your ability, okay, you want a few more bucks? Let's trade it. If you're doing the job, as Rafael says, no problemo. I don't know, the, only a stupid person fires somebody that's doing their job, or doing their job competently. So I would say, if I was sitting on that dais, I would ask those three that same question. You gonna take the deal, thirty days or not? And you're out. We're, we, we do want performance, we want, we have elected you to keep tabs on that, and I don't want my phone, as it's been for probably thirty years, blowing up, saying this, that, and the others going on, and I can't do this or that. Let's put the policies in place that's gonna make it work. Let's make the free market work, let's put it in place in our city government. You got the ability to do it right now, let me see if you're gonna do it.
Okay, we have, okay, that was the end of public comments there. Okay, any deliberation? Okay, Councilmember Geiba?
Since I pulled this off, see if I can phrase this properly, because we don't want to do anything wrong here, but as an elected official who's responsible to the entire city, salary structures, maintaining our finances appropriately, I have strong misgivings about the amendments to the employment agreements for these three individuals with respect to the majority council. And therefore, I'm gonna stand my ground as I have the whole time, and I am not gonna vote for these, not the increases, not the city cars, not the other things that went on in that contract when you read it. And for the record, if some of you haven't heard, Mr. Russo is no longer the city manager for the City of Riverside. Things change. Thank you.
All right, Councilmember Cabrera?
Thank you. Um, I just want to say, um, you know, I came on the council last year, so I had to familiarize myself with all the developments that occurred several years before I joined. And one of the things that, you know, I, I learned about was the staff cuts that took place several years ago, and how we made cuts to several different departments, not just city staff, you know? And so, just in my time here, I'm just, I'm just glad, I'm grateful for the job that all of you have been able to do, because I know we've, we've kind of pushed you a little bit harder, you know? I know I do. I'm constantly emailing all of you, calling your offices, you answer, and I may frustrate you, but you answer my questions, and you get me the information. And, and that's that communication that we have, because it goes both ways. It's not just expecting you to reach out to us, we also have to reach out to you. So I'm grateful for that, and all I ask is that you continue doing the same job that you have been, and continue to progress, you know? It's easy for all of us to get comfortable, so all I ask is, just please don't get too comfortable, just continue doing what you've been doing, you've been doing a great job. The city's moving forward, and, and just keep, just keep doing what you're doing. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Uh, yes, I just want to say that I was here when, uh, the city clerk, Pat Jacquez Natus, and our city manager, Tom DeSantis, were hired. And it, it was my, you know, I, I voted wholeheartedly, because I felt that they were the best individuals for the job, so I wasn't here when Martin was hired, but he's doing an excellent job, and, um, their, their jobs are not permanent, and they know that, they know that. They're at-will, and, um, I think that they have a council that's gonna hold them, hold their feet to the fire, and they get evaluations. The city clerk, I mean, she did excellent. I'm not, I can't speak to the facts, but, um, because it was done in closed session, but we wouldn't have this item on the agenda for any of our employees, which are the two mentioned, and the city attorney. And I feel very confident that they will continue to do an excellent job. I don't see them, I don't see their personalities as someone that's gonna slack off, because, you know, their contracts changed, I just don't see that. They're like the Energize, Energizer Bunny, just, they just keep on going, and the staff be, 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 below them, their subordinates, they respect them very much, and that's very important. It's very important that, at the city council, that we have respect for our three employees, because they're subordinates, you know, all the directors and everyone that works under them must have the same respect that we have. And I know that the city, look what we, look what happened tonight, I mean, these projects that came about, they don't just happen, you know? We have a great staff, and we have people that are relentless in their endeavors to make Moreno Valley a great city, and we're gonna continue in that path. So I, I have all the confidence in them, and I know that their jobs are very difficult, but they have the ability, they have the intelligence, they have the integrity and initiative to go out there and bring that business to Moreno Valley so that we can continue to thrive. So congratulations to the three of you.
Okay, I'll go ahead and close the deliberation, entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Moved by, um, Councilmember Cabrera, second by Marquez. Okay, and it's approved of four yeses, one no. Okay, we'll move straight to, we did the G. Yes, okay. Riverside County Transportation Commission, Mayor Pro Tembaca?
Thank you, I'm mayor.
Okay, um, Councilmember Marquez, Riverside Transit Agency?
Oh, yeah, thank you, mayor. At the Administration and Operations Committee meeting, the board approved schedule changes to Route Two Hundred, which is the Disney Resort area. That's that new, um, route that goes from San Bernardino, Corona, uh, all the way through Orange County to, um, Disney World. I call it Disney World, Disneyland, whatever. But it's the, the fun place to take your kids. The weekend and the weekdays and the weekend eastbound trips will be departing Disneyland at a new hour now. Before it was at nine thirty. They had a lot of complaints about, you know, we're not able to see the fireworks show at nine thirty. And, and, and we have to catch the bus, we're on the bus, we don't get to see the fireworks show. So RTA decided to, to give it a, a try and extend the, um, um, departure time at a later date at ten fifteen. So, um, that will take effect on May thirteenth. So if you do take the bus to Disneyland, you're gonna be able to see the fireworks show and, and not miss the bus, so. And if you have any other questions related to anything on RTA, visit the website. That concludes my report.
Great. Um, we have Mayor Protembaka. Go ahead and you can do the two, the Riverside County Transportation Commission, and then the School District City Joint Task Force.
Thank you, mayor. For RCTC, the Riverside County Transportation Commission, baseball season has begun. And MetroLink's Angel Express.
Yeah.
Train is back. For seven dollars or less, fans can catch the train from any of the eight Riverside County MetroLink stations. Paris South through Corona West on Friday night. The home games begin at seven oh seven, and riders exit the train at the Anaheim Arctic Station, just steps away from the Angel Stadium. You can visit metrolinktrains.com for further details. I'm a Dodger fan, so it's difficult to read that. But it's okay. Uh, we had the, um, joint task force today, and it, it's a very interesting, uh, meeting. We have, uh, the city of Moreno Valley, Lake Peristate Park, Moreno Valley Unified, Valverde Unified, and, um, our police department and engineering and so forth, and the, uh, after-school program, Think Together. So we met earlier today, in addition to the, um, city representatives, we also had Moreno Valley College at the meeting. The Public Safety Expo was held on April sixteenth, which is this Saturday. There were about forty displays and exhibits and a large attendance. And I have to say that the weather was fabulous. New to the event was a quiet room, which enabled children with, uh, stimulation issues, sometimes associated with autism. Uh, they had a quiet area away from all the, uh, excessive stimulation. And staff received favorable comments from, uh, parents that attended with their children. The city of Moreno Valley will be hosting a Movel Rocks and Movel Movies, uh, series over the summer. A special concert movie on August tenth will be focused on the anti-bullying program. Children will learn about anti-bullying prior to the event with the movie Wonder showing immediately after. The film follows a child with, uh, Treacher's Collins Syndrome trying to fit in. Staff proposes to partner with both school districts to enhance the evening. The city of Moreno Valley Transportation Division outlined the upcoming paving and slurry seal projects, which include updating access ramps, bike lanes, and crosswalks. Through these projects, transportation will be increasing the width of the stripes on the streets from four inches to six inches to improve safety, especially for us seniors that can't see so well. A consultant has been hired to assist with citywide pedestrian safety study. And finally, the Movel Art Fest will be held on June second, and will include art displays, food, and chalk art competition. The event will be held from twelve noon until five PM at the, uh, Stone Ridge Town Center. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Uh, we'll go straight to, uh, the non-agenda public comments. Okay, Madam Clerk?
Javier Gurola, Scott Heverin, Rafael Burguerras.
Hey Javier?
Uh, good evening, uh, ladies and gentlemen. Uh, my name is Javier Gurola. I reside at two three eight three three Whittier Street in Colton, uh, Moreno Valley jurisdiction. Uh, on August thirtieth of twenty fifteen, my neighbors Cody and Colt Muzzi burned my house. They conspired with my brother, Jesus Gurola, to have him say that he had burned my house and he went back to the Bay Area. Or actually, he never came down here, but he went and told everyone that he had burned my house. Uh, Farmers Insurance denied me housing. I went back to my sisters. Uh, the house was set on fire again on, uh, November twenty seventh, I believe. Uh, then Farmers Insurance paid, uh, three hundred and forty-one thousand dollars, uh, in excess of that on January seventh of twenty sixteen. Uh, there has been a tax against my life, because the public adjuster cashed the check by forging my signature and had a rubber stamp made of the, uh, mortgage company. On November fourteenth, I believe, two men arrive at my house saying that they had been hired to change the locks as the property was no longer mine, and I had to get the hell out. In the condition that I was in, I left. Couple of weeks ago, I found out that the property is still under my name. Uh, the mortgage company has been keeping up current with, um, uh, property taxes. The property is still burnt. I have come to the Moreno Valley Police Department on numerous occasions to have them investigate, because it is an arson event. I have talked to Officer Hill, Sergeant Thurm, Deputy Torres, Officer Williams, Sergeant Stans, Investigator Drexler. Nobody wants to investigate this. We cannot have this, not in the United States of America. This is supposed to be my dream, my American dream. It turned out to be my American nightmare. I need help.
Thank you, Javier. Okay, and we'll look into that, uh, case, okay? Uh, Scott Heverin. Followed by Rafael Burguerras. Okay, Rafael? And then, uh, we can have, uh, Lucha, Roy, and Ken, uh, be ready.
Good evening, mayor. Council members, staff, and residents. Um. I got my paperwork together. I found my, uh, A twelve. I had it mixed up with A ten. Only because this has been a long day, a long evening with seventeen thousand, three hundred and eighty pages that I went through in five days. I go through this. When they send me their agenda, I go through it. I look at what's important, what needs to be talked about, and what needs to be agreed. So I'm glad the A twelve passed, because that is the law. Those are ordinance for vendors that come and do business, people that are going to be, um, getting hired to do background checks. It's not an easy thing, Moreno Valley residents. We have rules. If they break them, then the chief will come in next. My second one was the water issue. For the golf course. That's important to me, cause I saw these men and women that came up here and gave up themselves to compromise. Okay? See, that's why I look at the agenda and the items. To reflect what happened in the past and what could be done in the future for the city of Moreno Valley. That's why I do this. And I'm glad. That I have been taught by many people before me. Even Mr. Gaiba taught me how to do this. So. I'm glad the staff is here. I'm glad Moreno Valley is growing. I call it the new Moreno Valley, cause we're new. We're getting refaced every time we turn these pages. Something new is happening in the city of Moreno Valley. I love it. We're new. We're soaring like that bird out of the tree. We're doing brand-new things. We can compromise with the opposition. On either side. And that's what we did on Thursday. We found an agreement, like tonight, again, we found an agreement to get things done. That's what it's all about in the city of Moreno Valley. So people can live better lives, can say, well, I'm going home, or they can say, when people ask them where you live, they'll say Moreno Valley. They'll say, wait, like, the way I was feeling. They'll make it their home. That's what we want. Thank you tonight, Moreno Valley, you've been good to us.
Okay, thank you, Rafael. Next speaker is Lucha Oden, followed by Roy, and then Ken.
Evening, I have a book for council, so can I take it up there, or?
Yeah, just go, yeah, go ahead. That way you don't waste your minute, or, or we'll start it over.
Good evening, mayor, council members and staff. My name is Lucha Oden, and I'm a financial advocate and educator here locally in Moreno Valley. I am a proud resident and have been so for over twenty years. April is Financial Literacy Month, which was recognized in two thousand and four by Senate Resolution Three Sixteen to raise public awareness about the importance of financial education and the serious consequences that may be associated with the lack of understanding about personal finances. According to recent surveys, North Americans are facing serious financial challenges. Thirty-three percent or more than seventy-seven million of Americans don't pay their bills on time. Thirty-nine percent carry credit card debt from month to month. Only fifty-nine percent of adults say they have savings. It's ironic that we live in one of the wealthiest countries in the world, but we always have money problems. We can work hard all our lives but retire poor. We do so much to raise our kids just to see them finish college with a lot of debt. Debt becomes a way of life. Nobody teaches us how to manage our money in school. Financial issues are not often discussed and financial products not always explained. Most people have trouble reading a financial statement. We use credit cards every day and don't always understand the hidden charges. We buy insurance policies and stick them in a filing cabinet. We contribute to our retirement accounts and hope someone will take care of it. The reason I am here today is to share about our National Campaign for Financial Literacy to educate a million families by the year twenty twenty. We just finished, um, Money Games workshops for the teens, and will be hosting workshop series for the adults during the entire month of June at the Moreno Valley Library on Kitchen. We are currently providing these workshops in the city of Blythe. I'm happy to reach out to the community there, to the citizens, residents, but I live here in Moreno Valley. I'm asking the city to partner with me to educate the residents, community here, the employees. I love what I do, I'm passionate about what I do, because there was no Saving Your Future book for me, there was no financial education for me and my family. And so in closing, I would like to read a couple of excerpts from April's letter for Financial Literacy Month from Governor Jerry Brown last year. Let us all take time to increase our knowledge of our finances and encourage our friends and family to do the same. I encourage Californians to take advantage of the free resources, including seminars and workshops, classroom presentations, online services, and educational materials. And learn how to better manage money, investments, credit, and debt, and avoid financial scams and fraud. By empowering Californians with the knowledge and tools they need to help them make critical decisions, including financing higher education, buying a home, starting a business, and saving for retirement. We are investing in a brighter and more successful future.
Thank you, Lucha.
Thank you.
Okay, Roy Blackard. Followed by Ken, and then Bob.
So did you ever have a girlfriend you thought was the greatest thing since sliced bread? Then in the course of three months, you heard, oh, she's sleeping with your best friend, she's getting drunk. Yeah, she's charged you fifty grand on your credit card, and in three months, you're going, holy smokes, I'm in deep bandini. I think that's, you know, uh, uh, I just heard that Johnny Russo's out at Riverside. I think he got a great evaluation, and all of a sudden, he's gone. How much is that, you know, how much is that costing Riverside? How much is that, you know, is Gary next? I mean, I think we ran that same situation here. I mean, it cost us a lot of money, all of a sudden, we're, our city manager's getting a great evaluation, three months later, gone. Cost us a lot of money. That's why I brought up the proposition, and I'm looking, I'm judging, and I think the public can say, what are, you know, you're our stewards of looking at that. Yeah, everything looks rosy today, but tomorrow's a different day. Everything changes. Don't constrict our ability, or your ability, to make those decisions and make them on a dime and make them the most efficient way, because today's tax day. But in two days is Tax Freedom Day, which is even more important, the day you actually start earning money for yourself. And this is part of the problem. It goes across our city governments, our county, our state, and our federal government. They keep looking at us, the taxpayer, the citizens. And what they see is dollar bills when they're looking at us. They think we're an unlimited pot. They think that pension system in California is gonna go on forever. They think the funds are unlimited. They think everything, oh, we're just gonna be able to spend and nation build nationwide and everything, but you keep coming back for us to more and more taxes. Every time. Just like the hotel tax. Is it fixing public safety? Is the utility tax done that? Which day? And most of you have done that. Which day are we gonna put the repeal of the utility tax on the ballot? Which day are we going to take? The, the, maybe the marijuana tax and the hotel tax? And we could have done that. We could have dedicated the hotel tax to public safety, because I said right here in the dais, I would support it. And it would have passed as a special tax, when people in that well, all across the board and on that dais, said it wouldn't. It passed by seventy percent. It's a failure in leadership. And you used a hundred, up to a hundred thousand of our tax money, I'm gonna say, playing in the gray area to advocate it. This stuff has gotta stop, really, if we're gonna improve things.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ken Iglesias, followed by Bob and Luis Palomares.
Good evening, mayor. Good evening, council members. Good evening, staff. And good evening, fellow residents. I would like to talk to you about seven things. The first thing I would like to ask the council to please reconsider on table in the decision to study to add more council members. The second thing, you can hear me correctly, you can hear me, right? Okay. The second, the second is posting the agenda back to twelve days, like how it was. And the third thing is, what is the city council doing to ensure that most of Moreno Valley residents have fiber optic internet within the next five years? Because the internet is very slow. Even, I currently have four hundred megabytes per second, and that is slow, and sometimes on four K. And number four, this might be a little bit out of the net, but a couple of years ago, I got a water bottle of the city that was like steel or aluminum, and currently, when I was like already old, I'm wondering if I could receive a new free water bottle, that's steel or aluminum, from the city. And the fifth thing is, you know how there was lots of people earlier today? And I was like in the conference room, out there in the hall, and I was looking at that TV, and I was wondering, how big is that TV? Because that was like a huge TV in that conference room. And number six, I'd like to say, I would like to ask council, what is the council doing to reassure, to like, to advance the five G technology that will be actually being tested in a couple of cities across the nation by the end of next year? And lastly, I think the United States needs a new department, the Department of Technology Advancement. And that will be all. Thank you.
Thanks. And then Ken, I would, Ken, I would just encourage you to, uh, reach out to us, also our staff as well. Um, you can call our, um, city council office, and then I'm sure, uh, any one of us could, could answer some of your questions. Okay, thank you.
Luis Palomares, community activist. Wow. I seen Scott Heverin here today. I'm glad he left, cause I don't think he had anything. Wow. I seen Scott Hepburn here today. I'm glad he left because I don't think he had anything good to say. As far as, he's all involved in the recalls. He's totally involved in the recalls. And you know, Marcus also, you know, did a lot of good things. He voted all the right ways today, Marcus, for the most part. But you're still in the swamp with all these buzzards. You know, you're flying high with the eagles here, but you're still in the swamp with the buzzards. Scott Hepburn. They're involved in the recall. He had a bachelor today. Ladonna Jensen, the one that goes to church over here at Discovery. How dare her? I wonder if her pastor knows what she's doing. Out there collecting signatures on a recall. She has to come in through the back door again. You know, I don't understand these people. Why don't you just wait for the seat to open up again? Then Denise Fleming, another no good, lying. She says she's a reverend, another liar knocking at doors, lying about Mrs. Baca. Her and Ladonna Jensen, all of that, that same, oh, well, don't forget Price. We'll leave out, don't leave out the ringleader here. You know, when are you going to get out of the swamp with these people? You say you're not involved, but you're involved. They're all undercover now. You know, you're not at the corners no more, like you did in the last two recalls with the last mayor that was here, Mrs. Baca. You're not at the corners, but you're there. You're still doing it and you say you're not, but you are. You know, it's a dirty shame. That is going to cost the taxpayer of Moreno Valley thousands of dollars for a special election again. Thousands of dollars that we could do something else with. Wow. That's a shame. That's a dirty shame. And you know what? I'm going to be talking about this, Marcus, until you leave that seat. If you're there another three years, so be it. Or two years, whatever your term is, or if you get recalled, I'm going to be talking about this because these are the facts. This is the truth. This is what you're doing. And you could sit there all day long and clean it up after I sit down and, oh, no, I'm not involved. No, I'm not doing this, but you are. You're right involved. You're in the swamp with it. You're up to your same old dirty tricks behind the scenes. What a sad day when so much other stuff's going ungood here. When the staff's doing what they gotta do, when the council's doing what they gotta do. Well, I can't speak for Crybaby Gaiva, the hater. You know, everything's no good. Oh, no, he knows everything. You know? And I'm surprised you're not on his bandwagon. He voted on a lot of things today. I'm surprised. And I know that, I hear that, you know, the boss, Price, is moving out to, I think, wow, Arizona. Go with him. Well, you could pick up mowing his lawn over there and being his poncho boy and sitting in his lap. Go with him and take Ladonna with you, that bank thief.
Madam Clerk, anymore?
No more speakers.
Okay, city manager's report.
Can I get a segue or something? Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protam and members of the council. I'll address a few issues that came up there in comment tonight. First of all, to the gentleman who was asking about broadband. We are working with the county. The county is advancing a program that is aimed at expanding access to broadband throughout Riverside County, and we are involved in that. Answer to tonight's trivia question, the television in Conference Room D is 75 inches. I had help with that when the guy's in the back, so thank you, Tim. Onto a more serious matter. A gentleman tonight spoke about his concerns pertaining to a residential structure fire. We have confirmed that the residence in question is not located within the city limits of the city of Moreno Valley. And so we encourage the gentleman to contact officials in the appropriate jurisdiction where the house lies. Another speaker tonight talked about MVU utility rates. The answer to that one is really easy. It's right in the staff report and I'll read just a few words. This report recommends approval of a resolution that would amend Moreno Valley utility rates to maintain approximate parity with Southern California Edison. And here's the important part, and which do not exceed the current cost of service. Just want to get that on the record and that is in the agenda package for all to see. And another speaker, Mr. Brugeras, has talked to us several times tonight about his concerns about water rights on the golf course. We're watching that, working on that, and I'll speak with Mr. Brugeras directly and tell him what we know about that. I'd like to thank the police and fire departments and a number of other city departments for making Saturday's Public Safety Expo so successful. I'd also like to thank the mayor for welcoming the community to the event and I thank the Mayor Protam and all the members of the council for taking time out of your days to join the community at the event. Having all of you there made it extra special. I'd like to thank residents for contacting the city recently to suggest opportunities to light the M on Box Springs Mountain to recognize significant events. Last Saturday, the M was purple to promote awareness of the National Walk for Epilepsy and that has a special place in my heart. Next week, the M will be blue to recognize Child Abuse Prevention Month. And so we ask residents to continue suggesting commemorative events through the city's website and we encourage residents to keep your eyes on the M. And when you see that it's illuminated in a color other than white, just check our website and you'll get information and learn more about important issues of community significance. And lastly, the council tonight took unanimous action to approve several very significant projects in Moreno Valley. Projects like these are proof positive that our community is moving full speed ahead to achieve the council's vision for a prosperous, economically vibrant city. Projects like these are also significant because they represent multimillion dollar investments of private sector capital in Moreno Valley. Nothing says that we're on the right track like a record-setting pace of private investment. These developers, they're sophisticated, they're economically savvy, and they have wisely chosen to invest in our wonderful and thriving community. And so we thank them for their trust in us and we pledge to continue to work closely with them to bring their project to completion and join them in celebrating their grand openings. That concludes my report this evening.
Thank you. City attorneys' report?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
It's a hard one to follow, huh? Okay, Councilmember Marquez? We're closing?
I'm afraid to say anything. Wow. I mean, anyways. I want to announce on April 28th, from 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM, the city of Moreno Valley is proud to join the Veterans Supplemental Support Group Network. And what this is, it's a walk to express the service-related mental illness that has an impact on veterans. On April 28th, the city of Moreno Valley, along with Riverside, San Bernardino cities, will be involved in a Daisy Walk. There's a two and a four mile route, which exclusively only for only for the veterans with mental problems. This is not a walk just for a veteran being in Vietnam. This is only for veterans that have a mental illness. It's an awareness walk. And what this consists of is, there's a gold daisy that will recommend or represent experience lost of loved ones to suicide. A blue daisy will represent that you are willing to walk in part of the effort to combine or combat service-related mental illness. And each one of these will designate what part of the walk you're going to be involved in. What I'm asking for in the city of Moreno and the surrounding areas, we're asking for the residents of these communities to come out on that day and walk with us. Bring your family. What we'll do is we start off at the front of the National Cemetery. We walk through the cemetery. We'll visit all these monuments for Medal of Honor winners and so on. But at the same time, we'll represent the veterans with this suicide awareness. It's, we had a walk through today with the cemetery personnel. And my understanding is we're going to have individuals from, public officials from Washington, Sacramento, local city officials. And it's something going to be big. It's the first year they're going to have it here in Moreno Valley. We want to show that the community and the county and the region that we, Moreno Valley residents, along with Riverside and San Bernardino, we are very much involved into this awareness of suicidal mental illness, suicidal with veterans. So I'm asking is, on this date, come on out, walk with us, maybe for an hour or so. You don't have to walk the whole four miles or the two miles. Come out for a mile and walk with us. Get a daisy and pin it on your jacket, coat, hat. Come on out and support us. And hopefully, it will be a very successful walk and it's a start of many more to come. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Just a few things here. First of all, I want to thank Parks, the Parks Department, Patty Solano and Kevin Callister, everyone else who's involved in the planning of this event. June 2nd, the city is going to have our first official art festival at the Stone Ridge Shopping Center. There's going to be chalk donated from the school board, Moreno Valley Unified School District. They're donating chalk for all the children to come out and draw all over the parking lot. Thank you also to Public Works and all the other departments who have a hand in organizing and planning this event. So stay tuned for this, everyone. We'll be putting up flyers and all over the place and announcing it on social media. Let's see. Also, a couple of things that came to my mind as we were going through the meeting and the items on the agenda. For example, the roads, and thank you to Public Works again, Michael Wolf. I know you're new, but you're, you know, you hit the ground running. You brought a lot of expertise over from Orange County. So what came to my mind was, you know, the general plan update that we've been talking about for several months now, for a long time, not just several months. So I know that that's something that we're going to be working on here, moving into the rest of the year. And, you know, planning out the future of our city for the next decade or two and establishing that vision for many years to come. So I'm just glad to be able to work together with all of you and my colleagues here on the council and the residents. So when the time comes for all this later this year, you know, we do need the residents' input as well so that you tell us where we want to go as a whole. Let's see, this, earlier this week, or last week, I was in Los Angeles again. I actually had the opportunity to drive through my hometown of Compton. And it hasn't changed much. I mean, it's still, it's still rundown and the roads are, you know, falling apart and there's trash everywhere. There's a lot of homelessness out in Los Angeles. And it just kind of reminded me of how much better, a better quality of life we have out here in Moreno Valley and Riverside County area. And regardless of all of that, you know, we're still working to improve all of these things. For example, the roads and addressing the homeless issue and increasing the quality of life, you know, cleaning up the city. So that's just something that came into my mind and I'm glad that we're moving in that direction and working on all of these things. So investing into our infrastructure, repairing all these roads that are crumbling around the city. I know it's a lot, but we're addressing the issue. We're starting and that's step one. The Homeless to Work Program, I can't talk about that enough. Last week, I was out, actually on Friday, I was patrolling the district and I got a chance to talk to a homeless gentleman by the name of John. He was standing on Iris and Paris, holding a sign for, asking for a job. And I actually had a chance to watch a TED Talk by the mayor of Albuquerque, who met with Dr. Gutierrez to talk about that program. And he showed, the mayor of Albuquerque showed a picture in his presentation where there was a homeless gentleman under a sign for 311, talking about, offering jobs. And he was holding the sign, or it was offering food and shelter and he was holding a sign asking for a job. And he said that, when he saw that, that's when he moved forward and created the Homeless to Work Program. So I'm just glad that we have it here. Salvation Army is doing an excellent job. People are starting to get permanent jobs and it's moving forward. I would also like to remind everyone about the Food Bank over at 13793 Redlands Boulevard. That's happening again this Saturday at 8:00 AM. If you know anyone who's in need, please send them our way. We'll be there this Saturday at 8:00 AM. Also, the Public Safety Expo was this past Saturday. It was a real nice event again. It's my second time there. And I was really glad to see the military there. Our friends over at the Recruitment Center, we had Marines there as well. You know, they were doing their pull-ups and the army was there showing off the military ambulance. So I'm just really glad to see that partnership is strengthening more and more. And the last thing I want to mention, the Unity Conference that happened today. It was in Palm Springs. And that was put on by the Riverside County Office of Education led by Dr. Judy White. It was a, it was a really nice event, a powerful event. I think the highlight of it was the keynote speaker, who was Dr. Martin Luther King Jr.'s daughter. She was the keynote speaker there and man, she speaks so elegantly and fluently and you can tell, you know, there's, there's power in her words and there's something else there. And she spoke, you know, directly to all of us and definitely to me. I could resonate with everything she was talking about. And one of the things she mentioned was communication. You know, the event itself, the Unity Conference was an example of that. How different stakeholders, not just educators, but lawmakers, you know, policymakers and nonprofits and law enforcement are coming together into one room to talk about big issues and how we can solve all of them. So we need to share our perspectives, all the different points of view and having that communication. So moving forward, you know, hopefully, we can advocate to the state and the federal levels that when these decisions are being made, specifically for education, for example. It's not just the policymakers, lawmakers sitting in a room at a table, choosing the fate of all of our children. We also need to have the children, the students, the teachers, the school administrators, the businesses, the nonprofits, the clergy. We all need to be at the table together in order to make these decisions. Because if not, we're excluding everyone and we're not seeing the full picture. So in closing, I just hope that, you know, we all continue in unity and we continue to build that sense of community here in Moreno Valley.
Mayor Protam Baca?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to the staff, especially our city manager, because he's the leader of our city as far as keeping our employees not only satisfied, but giving their best to our city. And tonight, we heard about significant projects, as our city manager mentioned. They're major projects that were approved in our city. And these companies, they didn't go anywhere else. They came here to Moreno Valley because they know that it's a thriving community, that we're financially solvent and that we have the staff, the departments, that cut the red tape and roll out the red carpet, as we say. We were very inviting and we have streamlined the process on how to get permits and what have you so that you can build your businesses here. And besides all that, I want to talk about my district, District One. We have three hotels being built and two of them are in Edgemont. And we also have, if you look at all the corridor section, it's just growing. And we're going to have affordable housing built in Edgemont. We're going to have some senior citizen homes and both are affordable housing. And that's what we lack in California. So we need to do that here in the city so that more people, especially seniors, they want to sell their big homes because they've already raised their kids, they're empty nesters and they want to move into something more manageable, which is a one or two bedroom house. So we're looking at that in Edgemont. And I know that people are going to flock to them and they're going to be sold out really, really quick. And we also have our major development, which has already been improved, which is the World Logistics Center. And we're just waiting for the courts to make decisions. And I know that we're going to stop slinging mud and we're going to start moving dirt. And that's going to happen pretty soon. And I also want to address all the rumors, the gossip, the lies that are out there on Facebook about our staff because I'm offended by it because I know how hard and diligent the people here. because I'm offended by it because I know how hard and diligent the people here work. I know firsthand because I see it, and we meet with them on a, you know, almost daily basis. We get phone calls, emails, everything that's going on, you keep us surprised of what's, what's, what's happening. And it's our duty to represent the community and do what's best, not only for District One, but for the whole city. So when people ask, you know, what are you doing? Well, you know, come to the city council. Look at our agendas, come, you know, look at our Planning Commission meetings because there's a lot going on in Moreno Valley. And everywhere you go in Moreno Valley, I mean, everyone's washing their cars all the time because we just have so much dust. You know, because we're building, building, building. And if you go down Ironwood, we're building apartments. You go down Day Street, you see all the retail and hotels going now. You go down Sunny Meat, and you know, there's earth movers everywhere. So there's a lot going on. So again, you know, if you have any questions, we're, we're here, we're available. And, you know, don't listen to the people that are spreading rumors, gossip and lies because they don't love Moreno Valley. They're here to destroy it and to do their very best at offending the people that represent you, the city council and our staff. And that's all they do. If you can even ask them, you know, what have you done? And they won't be able to answer you. So please support our staff and most, most, mostly, and support the city council that you have elected to represent you. And if you have any questions, you know, look us up. I think all of us are on Facebook, Twitter, Instagram, Nextdoor, and we have the city website. So look for us, email us, call us. You can call our, our council office at four-one-three-three thousand eight and make an appointment. We're always willing to meet with you. So thank you and good night.
No, not right now. So I'm just gonna go ahead and do my closing comments. I just want to thank the staff also for all of your hard work and, you know, and everything that you have done. And, and, you know, as far as, you know, those amendments, you know, it is based on merit, it is based on performance. You know, I can't go into specifics or anything like that, but I think that they do an awesome job, and we always want quality. You know, it's not just, you know, a warm body there. And so that's something that sometimes you have to take into account as well. I also want to say that I attended the Public Safety Expo, welcomed the residents. It was a really well-attended event. We had a lot of people there. We had a lot of actual, I think, probably some more tools and newer, newer gadgets that were there. It was pretty cool. So it was really nice for the grandkids, the kids to be there, and, and just even the adults too. The adults were really happy. I also want to let everybody know that this coming month is, actually in May, is Foster Care Awareness Month. So we will be issuing a proclamation for foster care. This is a population that we have about almost thirty-eight hundred foster youth in the Riverside County system. So, you know, this is something that we do have a need, you know, in the county and, and also there's a need in the city of Moreno Valley as well. And so I actually was able to meet and reach out, I reached out to the Voices for Children nonprofit organization, and they're the ones that do that court-appointed special advocate. And they're really a great organization. I've actually been able to work with them because as an educator, I do, I've had some students that were, you know, in the foster system, and they've had the CASA workers, and it's, these people are actually volunteering their time and not getting paid and working with the teachers, working with the counselors, trying to really help the youth, and even actually mentor them too. So they take them out to museums. They do a lot of great things. And so they only have thirty-six for the whole city of Moreno Valley. And so that's one thing that I'd like to, to really help, is try to get more people to, to join, you know, to become a CASA member. Also, and I'm glad that with the CDBG funding, you know, that we were able to, you know, to approve that because it's gonna help an additional, I believe, twenty more students. So, so that's a great thing. Also, I'm happy and thrilled that we approved all of the CDBG funding. You know, that's over three hundred thousand dollars to nonprofits and organizations, especially the additional road money that's in there as well. And then obviously, the continual money to the homeless program that we have. Various shelters, the nonprofits that we reach out to, and then obviously, the mayor's Homeless to Work Program as well. That's another great thing that, that we're doing. Also, tonight, we've taken a very important step, you know, in improve, in approving these projects and really moving one step closer to Momentum Movail's goals and initiatives of bringing more economic development. Especially, you know, obviously with the Prologis, the local hire program, that agreement that they figured out within themselves, the carpenters and Prologis. I think that it's very, very important, local hire. And obviously, the revenue, the revenue and then the benefits of the local jobs that those jobs will have on those families and the kids, shorter commute. I think that's a great thing. I also want to mention and say thank you to the Press Enterprise. They actually wrote a really nice article about the innovative camera program that we have in the city to combat mailbox theft and vandalism. And I think that's a great thing that we're actually doing in the city of Moreno Valley, whereas other cities are not doing that. Remember, the post office, actually the mailbox vandalism and theft, that's actually a post office jurisdiction. So it's not a city jurisdiction, and, but we're actually doing something about it. So we're putting cameras and locations and hotspots and trying to really not only deter the crime, but, you know, catch them too. So I think it's a great thing that we're also doing. And then we also are helping along the post office and installing some of those boxes. And then I, I just want to say, lastly, just wanted to read this quote. You know, former First Lady Barbara Bush, she passed away today. And I think this is a great quote because number one, you know, it came from her, but also it's really about our, our children and what we're doing to, to raise them. So Barbara Bush once said, "Where will our country find leaders with integrity, courage, strength, all the family values in ten, twenty, or thirty years?" The answer is that you are teaching them. You're loving them and you're raising them right now. So these are the kids right now. So with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn in her memory of former First Lady Barbara Bush at nine twenty-four, nine twenty-three PM.